2025. The meeting is called to order at 6:37. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Wu.
Please rise. Place your hand on your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Close session report. Our city attorney will now give the close session report from the special meeting held earlier tonight.
Yes, the board met in closed session to discuss the litigation identified as Tappan Z versus City of San Gabriel. The City Council received a report from special counsel regarding that matter. No reportable action took place. The City Council also met with labor negotiator for the employee organizations identified on the agenda and received a report from Risk Management Human Resources Director Macias. Again, no reportable action took place. Madam Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you. We will now have some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the City Council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record. Please note that interactions between the City Council, city staff, and the public during meetings are subject to the city's rules of decorum.
Okay, approval of agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda order? Hearing none, the agenda order is approved. Next item.
Recognition of Gabriolino High School Girls Basketball Team for winning California Interscholastic Federation's Southern Section, Division 5A Championship. Mayor Minchaca will make the presentation.
Let's see. We would like to invite Coach Evelyn Morales de Raza's and team forward to receive certificates of recognition. If you can just come to the front. Thank you.
So if the coaches could please come up to the mic, I just wanted to say a few words. My, my, well, my kids all went to Gabriolino, but my girls in particular played all the sports. They never won a championship. I did have one who was a varsity all four years, but I know personally, especially those parents out there, how important this is. So I'm so happy for you guys. And I see Mira. We go back a long time. And Brian, I see you too, Brian. And so I think this is your last one. That's, I know. So it's been a long journey. We've known each other since the Coolidge days. So anyway, I just want to really congratulate- So anyway, I just want to really congratulate you ladies. This is an amazing accomplishment. You will always be recognized at the school because you are champions. And so it is very, very exciting. And I see a really proud father over there. But I would love to have each of the coaches come up and just say a few words, please. You deserve it. You worked so hard. Come on, come on up. Right here. The mic is on for you.
Hi, I'm the assistant coach Evelyn Terrazas, and I first off want to say thank you so much for this honor of being recognized by the City of San Gabriel. It means so much to us. The other thing is Coach Hironai and Coach Carla and Coach Leida, who's not here today, are so very proud of our girls. They work so hard. Their commitment is beyond. I mean, they're there early, they come on time. They're there late, they'll stay around. Even though they're tired and Coach really works them really hard, they'll still stand around wanting to shoot and everything and still put that passion that they have for basketball, you know. Everything that they do, these girls juggle so much. Their school, their academics comes first, you know. That's even with us. You know, they have a certain test or anything that needs to be done. If they have homework that's too much, then they'll sit there and do homework rather than practice, you know, because that's where they need to be at. We have a great support system with our parents who are so committed, just like these kids. They are there at every game cheering their players on, cheering, you know, supporting us when it comes to just wire, encouragement, you know, and everything like that, including the staff here at Gabriellino High School. Or back there, here, our principal, you know, our vice principal, our A.D.s.
I see Vince over there. Raise your hand, principal. There we go.
They're all amazing. They are, they are really amazing, and we are just so proud to be a part of Gabriellino and this school district. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's all I had to say. But anyway, thank you again for being here, for taking the time to come here. I know I talked to one of the parents, and it took a little effort there. But boy, did you come out. And I'm just so happy. I wasn't sure how many of you were going to be able to be out here today. So it tells you it's still within, you know, that championship just has so much memories and value. And to see, I mean, this is, this is a crowded room for us here at City Council. So it's just wonderful to see. So thank you again. Have a wonderful evening. You're welcome. Okay, we're going to continue on. Next item.
Hey, wait, they're not staying for all the boring politician stuff? Come on, stay for the boring politician stuff.
I just gave them a pass.
Oh, man, all right, enjoy.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on consent calendar items and on items interests that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. And Madam Mayor, we don't have any cards for general public comment, but I do have a speaker for item 4G.
So we will wait for, well, I'm sorry. Next item, consent agenda. And so you have 4G?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So let me first turn to my colleagues. Is there anyone who would like to pull an item for separate discussion? If not, why don't we just go ahead and call up the public comment for 4G?
Vivian Chan.
Well, hello, everyone. It's so nice to see familiar faces sitting across from me, so I won't be so scared. I know. And actually, I got it mixed up. I thought your meeting was yesterday, and I was in a lecture, and I was like panically texting all the people. Anyway, my name is Vivian Chan. Let me get, visual A is very important when you do presentation. Trust me on that part. Okay, there you go. Look at this. Okay. I am a community volunteer. Today, I'm wearing multiple hats, but one of the hats today for this presentation is I am the Community Outreach Chair for the United Charity Foundation and also the Universal Sunlight Foundation. So honorable council members, on behalf of the United Charity Foundation and Universal Sunlight Foundation, we respectfully request your support in waiving the fee for our Children Holiday Program scheduled on November 29, which will be a free program open to the public. This program is more than a seasonal celebration. It is a chance for the family in a time and the neighbors to come together in a time when many feel uncertain and alone. So both of our organizations are dedicated to foster family engagement in the area of health, art, and education. Guided by our very lovely president madam, Mrs. Linda Moy, she believe giving is receiving. By gathering to share joy, music, and holiday spirit, we hope to remind our community that we are not alone and that togetherness bring comfort, strength, and gratitude. Waiving the fee will ensure the accessibility for all family and help us further our mission of enriching lives throughout this holiday season. Inclusive events that celebrate the season and strengthening our sense of community. Another head of mine is a PTA mom for 35 years. Currently, I serve on the California State PTA Board of Manager focused on family engagement commission. So I am firsthand realize how important is engagement with family is about. So the mission of the California State PTA is to positively impact the life of childrens and family. So this year, our theme, are you ready? Today, tomorrow, together. So it take advantage to definitely raise a child collectively with your support of the Children Holiday Program on November 29, helping to bridge families and neighbors together in the spirit of giving, caring, connection. Today, tomorrow, together. Thank you. Ah, perfect timing. I rehearsed a little bit, right? Okay. That's it, right? Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, so we will now take it back to the council. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Have a second? Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item.
We have no public hearing or continued business this evening. Our next item is new business item A, Appeal of the Transient Occupancy Tax calculation by Champion Motel. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the staff presentation, followed by the appellant's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Will Kohola Kula, Finance Director for the City of San Gabriel. Tonight, we are here to consider an appeal from Champion Motel regarding the finance director's calculation of their transient occupancy tax, or TOT, liabilities for the three quarters ending September 30th, 2024, December 31st, 2024, and March 31st, 2025. The purpose of tonight's appeal is to determine the amount of TOT owed by Champion Motel, which may result in upholding the finance director's determination, modifying the TOT liability based on information presented tonight, or granting the appeal by Champion Motel. So some background information. Champion Motel is a 20-unit lodging facility at 130 West Valley Boulevard. Under San Gabriel Municipal Code, Chapter 35, hotel operators must collect and remit TOT on a quarterly basis. TOT, or transient occupancy tax, is a 12% tax charged on hotel stays paid by the guests, collected by the hotel operator, and remitted to the city on a quarterly basis. Champion Motel failed to remit TOT for the three quarters in question. And then on a side note, on May 16th, 2025, Champion Motel was shut down due to numerous code violations with all hotel guests having to relocate. The hotel is currently shut down. So calculation of the TOT liability. So since Champion Motel failed to submit TOT returns for the three quarters in question, per San Gabriel Municipal Code, Section 35.063, the finance director will determine the tax due using the best information available. The initial estimate that was calculated for the TOT liability was $33,915, and that estimate was based on two assumptions. One, an average nightly rate of $100 per night, which is reasonable based on other hotel rates in the area. And number two, an average occupancy rate of 50%, which would be 10 of the 20 rooms, which is on the low side as compared to occupancy rates of other hotels in the area where the occupancy rate averages 80% or higher. Champion Motel was notified of the TOT calculation by the finance director and informed of their right to request a hearing with the finance director in accordance with our municipal code, which Champion Motel did request a hearing with the finance director. On May 29th, the hearing was conducted. That included the Champion Motel, the city finance director, and other, and members of, other members of city staff. Champion Motel disputed that the nightly rate, disputed the nightly rate and occupancy rate. They contended that the nightly rate charged was only $33.33 per night, which they contended could be supported based on refund receipts that were provided after the motel was shut down. Champion Motel provided the receipts, and the $33.33 per night rate was accepted for the TOT calculation. Additionally, Champion Motel claimed that only eight rooms were occupied, which they claimed could be verified by city staff onsite when the motel was shut down. I personally reached out to city staff onsite during the shutdown. The police officer who assisted with the relocation of the displaced individuals informed me that 18 units were actually occupied. This was based on her observation of 18 rooms, and it was also of the 18 rooms occupied, and it was also corroborated by a tenant of the motel who claimed to be the owner's friend and the handyman of the hotel. Additionally, the code enforcement officer onsite during the shutdown also observed that 18 units were occupied. A copy of the statements from both the police officer and code enforcement onsite have been provided to the City Council as well as to the public. And both the police officer and code enforcement officer are here tonight if council would wish to speak with them. So based on this new information, we recalculated the TOT liability, and it was calculated using a nightly rate of $33.33 per night and an occupancy level of 18 rooms, consistent with the testimony from the city staff onsite during the shutdown. This brought the revised liability for the three delinquent quarters to $19,107.75. 18 rooms times the $33.33 rate. This is $14,807.25 less than the original estimate, and where that original estimate was based on a $100 nightly rate and the 50% occupancy rate, or 10 occupied units. So Champion's Motel was informed of this recalculation of the TOT and of their right to appeal the calculation to the City Council in accordance with San Gabriel Municipal Code 35.064. And then on July 23rd, Champion Motel paid the $1,120,000 appeal fee and submitted an appeal of the finance director's decision to the City Council. Champion's Motel contends that only eight of the 20 rooms were occupied, stating that 10 rooms were uninhabitable due to broken beds, showers, toilets, and air conditioning units. Several units lacked adequate furnishings, and two rooms were used for residential storage. And they submitted photos of the poor room conditions as evidence of their claim. So to summarize, Champion's Motel is delinquent on three quarters of their transient occupancy tax. The original estimate was based on a 50% occupancy, 10 rooms, at $100 per night, which equated to $33,915. At the hearing with the finance director, Champion's Motel presented evidence of a $33.33 nightly rate and claimed only eight rooms were occupied. Staff onsite during the shutdown verified that actually 18 rooms were occupied and not eight. And using the $33.33 per night and 18 rooms, the TOT liability was calculated to be $19,107.75 for the three quarters. And then Champion's Motel maintains that only eight rooms were occupied, which would reduce the TOT liability to $6,379.65, a difference of $12,728.09. And then finally, the council may uphold the finance director's decision, modify the liability based on the information presented tonight, or accept the appeal from Champion's Motel. This concludes my presentation. You know, pass back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to now pass it to our city attorney.
So we're doing something a little unusual tonight on this item. I just wanted to alert the City Council to that. You probably noticed my colleague, Martin, out in the audience. So this is a hearing, and central, and in the course of this hearing, you're acting a bit like a judge would act at a hearing. In other words, you're going to be a finder of fact now. And because of the requirements of due process, that means that you have to act more like a judge when you're doing that. And part of due process is making sure that the person who, that both sides to the dispute have a fair opportunity to present evidence and be heard. So for that reason, I have not been involved at all in any of the decision-making related to this matter. Martin has been handling that. In that way, Martin is serving as the attorney for the staff in presenting this, and I'm acting as the attorney, legal advisor to the council on this. So that's the distinction we're making. I would direct you to make your decision tonight based only on the evidence that is presented at this hearing. You may have heard something about this motel or these events in the community. If you have, I ask that you disregard that and only consider the evidence in front of you tonight. Both sides will be invited to come forward and present evidence on the topic. And then, once that's accomplished, you guys can deliberate and make your decision. If you've got any legal questions about the process, you can ask me those questions. If you've got legal questions about what the city did and why it did them, then Martin will answer those questions. Is that clear? Thanks, guys.
Great. Now I will ask Champion Motel to come up. The representative.
Hi.
Liz?
So, yeah, so this is Chen Yixiao. She's the owner.
I'm sorry, can you move into the mic so we can hear you better? You can lower the mic, too, if you like.
So this is Chen Yixiao. She's the owner, and she doesn't speak English. Also, she and Long Dong Xiao are husband and wife. So originally, they had discussed that only Long Dong Xiao will be, I'm the translator. So they had discussed that Long Dong Xiao would be the sole owner. He will be handling all the management for the company. So he's been doing that for several years. He does not allow any of his other family members and Chen Yixiao to be involved in any of the management process. So, and in that sense, for the past few years, Chen Yixiao was not able to manage or, you know, involve in any of the process before May of 2020, 2025. And because Long Dong Xiao has a bit of competency, he's over incompetency. He is over 81 years old, and he forgets things easier. And so that may have caused a lot of problem. And so, that may have caused a lot of problem for the community, and we're sorry about that. But legally, because of the agreement, none of us were able to involve in any of the process. So, we had to, you know, we were forced to come in, and she was forced to come in and had to, you know, follow the orders of the police and the city to evict the tenants. So, basically, she doesn't know what happened. And Mr. Xiao, over eighty years old, he is, you know, quite incompetent, and he is not able to handle a lot of things. So, due to that, you know, she is trying her best to comply with what the city wants, and she had evicted the tenants, and out of her own pocket, she had to pay out what the prepaid that the tenants had to do to pay, and that was probably about four hundred to eight hundred per month, you know, for those tenants. And that was, everything was out of her own pocket. And so, after this whole process, due to the closure, she also have to, from her own pocket, to comply with what the city wants with construction, you know, and do the reconstruction for the company. And she has been trying her best and consulting with a lot of contractors to, you know. And as you know, it does cost a lot of money to do that. And so, so, no, and then we are aware of what the director wants, and we had went on a hearing. So, basically, what happened is that when she was there, she, you know, she had found the evicted, she had paid eight or ten evicted tenants, about like four hundred to eight hundred per month. And she believes that, you know, there were only eight to ten units that were occupied. And in that case, she had also, you know, went and checked all the rooms, and there were ten to eleven rooms that were not habitable. It's not in a good condition. We took pictures of it. If you see the pictures, you can understand that the pictures are not in a condition for any living person to live in. And so, we, you know, we had recalculated the tax based on, you know, occupancy of eight to ten units. And it's about like eight hundred, eight thousand, eight thousand to nine thousand per month. So, on the average, we had calculated according to that. So, what we believe, you know, is that they said that, you know, the police had talked to, you know, some tenants. But according to her, there were only eight units to eight, eight units that were occupable, and it was in an occupied position. So, we do not know why, you know, why there was something else that was said otherwise. Yeah. And, you know, we have pictures of those rooms. They are not in, they are very dirty. You know, everything's falling apart. Some of them doesn't even, some of them doesn't even have any beds. So, it's difficult to, as we had tried to mention too well, is that, you know, about thirty-three dollars per month. But actually, when she did the eviction, she only paid out about eight hundred per month for the, it looks like about four hundred to eight hundred per month for the tenants, actually. So, thirty-three dollars is actually, you know, it's in the higher end of what was actually, actually got paid for. And if he actually had the money, he would have, you know, paid. But, you know, there were a lot of showerheads that was broken. You know, if she looked at the, I mean, how can you live in a condition that has no showerheads, you know, and you're getting thirty-three dollars per night? I mean, I believe that any of us, you know, any of the audience or any of your council, you know, if you live in a thirty-three dollar room, it's not possible that, you know, you don't even get a proper showerhead. You can't even use it. Or some of the rooms doesn't even have any beds. And I don't think anyone would be paying thirty-three dollars for a room with a condition that is, does not have showerheads or does not have any beds. And I hope, you know, the council and the audience would be, you know, would sympathize with her condition because, you know, she was not allowed legally to involve in the condition, in the management of the hotel. You know, he had insisted until, you know, everybody stepped in. So, now that she had to pay for the eviction, she has to pay for all the construction. And the construction, as you know, it's not going to, it's not, it's not like, it's not going to be less than one hundred thousand. You know, it's for sure more than that. And they, you know, we, you know, which, you know, we, you know, we tried to do what the police did, and, you know, we do agree that, you know, the rooms are not in a good condition. And but legally, we were not able to involve in any of the process. He, you know, she was not able to involve in any of the process, you know, before May of the eviction, until she had to pay everything out. So, we hope that you will sympathize with her condition and that the audience and the council, because she's trying to comply with everything. And so, yeah. And it had, we understand that, you know, the police may have spoken with some of the tenants, but one thing I have to mention is that, you know, she only paid out, you know, less than, you know, the thirty-three dollars per month, for sure. And so, it's, I think, she only paid about four hundred to eight hundred per month, and that was, that was it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I'm gonna pass it back to our city attorney. I think you wanted to say a few words.
Well, at the beginning of your comments, I just wanna make it clear that the issue here tonight is simply the issue of the unpaid transit occupancy tax. And that, and so that, you got to it at the end. You were focusing your comments on the issue of how many of the rooms were rented. And so, you did present that at the end.
Yeah.
Do you, you mentioned the photo evidence. Do you have any other evidence, witness testimony, or anything you would like to present about that issue?
She and my, you know, she and Peter, who's the son, she, you know, they were both there, and, you know, they had witnessed, you know, eviction for all of those tenants. And we also had got the receipts for the tenants that was actually evicted, and that there were only about, there were only like ten to, ten, ten receipts.
Ten receipts?
Yeah. About eight to ten, eight point eight. Yeah.
Ten receipts, the ones that we wrote it out to, because they overpay us. So, we reimburse them back the money.
The tenants are not going to leave.
We have the receipt for that. And because, what they're saying is that, the tenant is saying is that the receipt, because, for example, right, at that time, it's May, but then they paid from somewhere, and they paid like June or July. So, that's why, okay, they show us the receipt. Okay, then we reimburse them the money back as for that. That's how we get the receipt for that. And that's how we know, oh, okay, how much they are paying, because we are not involved with any of the management. We're even collecting money.
Yeah. 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 So, I mean, the tenants are not going to leave until they get their money back. So, there were only eight receipts that was given, and we have actual checks. They're all deposited in the banks. And so, that would be a valid evidence, you know, for, you know, tenants that actually live there. Yeah. So, yeah. She wants to have something to say.
This is有一个十八个房间.
Yeah. So, I think she had, she had, she's trying to say is that the police may have, you know, misinterpreted of what the tenant had said. There were actually only about ten, eighteen units, and not that eighteen units were occupied. So, that's what she believes, that was, there was a misunderstanding between, you know, what the police said and how many people, how many units were actually occupied. Because in those condition, some of the rooms could have like four to, four to five people occupying in one room. Yeah.
So, there's like twenty rooms in the motel, as you know. And then two other rooms is occupied by my father. And then I guess that's how we get into the number of eighteen. So, maybe, okay, eighteen rooms is how many rooms that's available, maybe to, that's not, well, at least, maybe rent out or something.
Yeah. So, yeah. So, there's a misunderstanding. She believes, yeah, so what she's saying is that there is a misunderstanding between what that tenant said and the police had said. What they're saying is that, yeah, eighteen, yeah. But then, actually, the actual receipts and the checks that was deposited in the bank, because the tenants are not gonna leave until they get the money back. And we only pay out eight checks.
So, just so I'm clear from what you're saying, is your testimony or the evidence tonight that you're presenting that there were eighteen residents?
No, no.
But they were in eight rooms?
There were more than, there could be more than eighteen residents, but only, only eight are occupied. Only eight are occupied. Yeah.
What you're saying is that, okay, there's only a room that's been occupied. So, we have A B C. We have A B C from the ones that we reimburse the money back to the customer, because the reimbursement is from, I guess, that's, that forgot, it's May fifth, thirteen or sixteen. Then we reimburse back to them for whatever that's been overpaid.
So, you had eight receipts that represented money you paid to the customers?
Yes.
Yes.
Also, the checks that were deposited in the banks.
Yeah. And then I think that the, well, has the receipt of the one that we give it to them.
Were there more than eight customers?
Well, not if I notice, but then that's how.
It could be more. Yeah.
Because, I mean, they would all want to have their money back if they paid over it. And then, and then, so that's why we, I mean, at that time, then we just try to, well, at least, we'll try to handle it. Oh, okay, write them a check and then reimburse them whatever that we think my father might have owed.
Were there customers that you did not refund payment to?
No.
No. Well, they're all there, the inspector and everything. So, and then they, and then they do see that we're doing our job trying to reimburse them about that. I think that was like one or two day on that, because the other thing is that they only give us two-day notice for the, for those people that's living there to move out. So, we had to, we had to do it within the time, and then, so that's why we tried to do it as soon as, as quick as possible.
Did you maintain receipts for the rent that you received from the customers?
Yes, we do have it.
Which one are you talking about?
Money received from customers or tenants?
We didn't receive. We paid them. We paid them. We paid them.
Okay. I understand that you're saying you paid eight of them back, but my question is, did you also have receipts for money that you received from customers?
You mean previously, man?
Yes.
Because that part is handled by my father, and then he does not do any paperwork. He doesn't even have anything. So, for, when we take over or when we step in, we don't have any paperwork. We just, so we just go by the receipt and then write it down and then.
So, to your knowledge, there is no receipt for the money you received from the guests, correct?
Previously.
Yes.
No.
Okay. And the only receipts you have are those instances where you refunded the guest money? And those are eight guests, correct?
Yeah. And because, oh, one thing is that because they bring the receipt that was being written previously, or like, for example, oh, my father, he gave them the receipt for them to collect the money for my mom, saying, oh, okay, they paid till like June or July. And then, so we saw that the receipt from them. And then, so that's how we write another receipt, say, okay, we give you back the money. That's how we determine how much we should give it to them. Yeah.
And am I correct that your testimony tonight is nobody, nobody in this room was responsible for receiving money from guests? That was your father who's not here, correct?
Yeah.
And so, you don't know who he received money from and how much, correct?
Well, one thing I just realized is that he said that there were prepaid of over, up to July, which is like two to three months. And, which is two to three months, right? But the most amount that we reimbursed was eight hundred dollars, you know. And so, yeah, it wouldn't be that much. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let me just now, let's start with council deliberation.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. That Will was the city.
I think he was giving the initial report.
Oh, okay.
But let's let the appellate, if they wanna close or not, they can.
Okay. Are there any final words for your?
Yeah. So.
Present you was the receipt that we wrote it out?
Sure. You have something to present now sometime.
Okay. Yeah, it's all in the iPad.
Can we submit it through the photo or?
Yeah. If you wanna submit it electronically to the city clerk?
A copy of the receipt that we gave it to them.
They have a copy of the receipt.
How they determine that it's, I guess, thirty dollars, thirty-three dollars per night.
Yeah. Whatever you wanna submit, you can submit it now or after the hearing, and it will be part of the record.
Okay. Yeah, we, because we had submitted to him, and I had to email to him.
Are there any further comments?
Yeah. So, Will has all the receipts. Will? You have all the receipts that we emailed you, right? You have all the receipts that we emailed you, right?
I, I have what you mentioned.
Yeah. So he has all the receipts that we sent you.
Okay, thank you.
So, and also, he has all the pictures.
Yeah, I'm gonna give the city an opportunity to speak now and then we'll, and then I'll take it back to council. Hello, Will. Okay, I wasn't sure if it was gonna be you or Martin, that Will.
Yeah, I think, we meet.
Okay, go ahead, Will.
So just to kind of reiterate kind of the, what I, what I spelled out in kind of the opening presentation of the situation, that the main contention is the number of units. We've accepted the nightly rate of thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. And so, so we met with them at a hearing to hear what they had to provide in order to, to come up with a calculation based on the best evidence available. And so they contended eight units and, and claimed that, that the city staff on site during the shutdown could corroborate, could verify that only eight units were occupied. So I was like, okay, that's, that's great. So I went to city staff on site, officer, the police officer on site and the code enforcement officer on site. You have a written statement from them of what they observed. And, you know, they have no skin in the game. They're just, they, the police officer on site came and helped the individuals who were displaced, helped them find housing. And what, what they told me directly, that what they observed, the police officer observed eighteen units that appeared to be occupied. She had a discussion with a tenant at the motel. He claimed to be the friend of the owner and the handyman, who also corroborated that it was eighteen units. The code enforcement officer observed the units as well. And based on his observation, eighteen units were occupied. And so that was the, the best information that we have available. So we use the, the eighteen units as the calculation. In regards to their submission of receipts, to say that, here are the receipts. This is only, this is the only number of people who are occupied. So here's eight receipts. There's really no way to tell that's complete. It's really, you know, whether they have more receipts that they didn't provide, unless, you know, possibly we wanted to dig deeper and start looking at bank statements and something like that from an auditor's perspective. So, so the, the best evidence that, that we had to do the calculation was the testimony from the police officer and the code enforcement officer on site. And that's how we, that's how we came up with eighteen units.
Thank you. So before I turn it back to council, I, I do need to ask, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no speaker cards.
Okay, great. So now I'm gonna turn it back to council for discussion. Who would like to start? Councilmember Wu?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question for Will. I think that we have heard both sides. So can you clarify, is the determination of eighteen units occupied rooms is just based on solely on our police officer? Have they gone into the units and they just do a report? Or do you have any kind of additional record to show the number?
We do have the written statement that is presented before you. And in that written statement, you know, they, they state what they, what they did to, to determine that it was, it was eighteen units. And from that written statement, they stated that they observed eighteen units that looked lived in, habitable. And so based on that observation, in addition to the discussion that the police officer had with the, the handyman, the resident of the motel, that was how the eighteen units was determined.
Got it.
I think there's an additional comment from Martin.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members, Mr. City Attorney.
That's weird.
We have the witnesses here. It would be the pleasure of the council to ask the witnesses exactly what they based their observation on. It's all recorded in the statement that was provided, but they are available should you wish to question.
Thank you.
And Will, if I may, I would like to just simplify the whole thing. So initially that we, we believe this is a room rate should be one hundred dollars per night. Then now we, we agree that what they have reported is a thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per night. So that part is already done. Now the argument is how many units? So they claim about like eight or ten units and we said it should be eighteen units. So now we are arguing this point.
Exactly. Councilmember Wu?
So I know that there is like, we have, in California, we have a key law. So, so that means that once a guest stay over thirty days or more, they legally consider as a tenant rather than just transient guests. For those people in our Champion Motel, are they transient occupant or tenant? Because the, according to the photo, it seems like it's almost impossible for them to acting a role as a transient occupant.
I'll have Attorney.
Yes.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. The location is licensed to operate a hotel. And whether or not that operation was in fact a hotel, our code provides that even if they don't collect the TOT, they owe that TOT to the city. So whether you call them transients or whether you call them residents, the Champion Motel is supposed to operate as a motel, not as an apartment building. And all the rules that apply to the motels in our code apply to that location.
Okay, great, thank you. This is something I would like to clarify as well. So for that, I have a question for the motel's owners. Oh, thank you. So according to your, your message, you said that you have stated there's only ten room, but because the ten, another ten rooms were uninhabitable, which being said, that is not allow people to live in. So that's the reason that you, you think that it's only eight units or ten units being occupied? And you don't really know that how many passengers or how many visitors that has stayed in hotels before May in two thousand twenty-five, is that correct?
Yeah, she, she only knows that the, the other ten rooms are not in living, are not occupied.
We have no idea as to how many people is staying there before we come over. So no, we have no, I, we don't know.
So that means you don't know?
Yeah.
And your mom doesn't know?
No.
And your dad doesn't know how to give you a feedback that what he knows?
So one, one question I have is you had mentioned about the transient occupancy tax. So the, they had mentioned in the city of San Gabriel, generally for the county, which is LA County, is that all the motels that, you know, they have transient occupancy over thirty days are, they don't, you're not subject to transient occupancy tax.
I mean, for us, we're okay, we will pay.
Yeah.
Even if, we know a lot of the tenant over there is staying over like a couple of years or three, five years. So, okay, it's because we wanna take care of this matter ourselves quickly as possible. So we said, we, we just tell the city, okay, we will pay the transient tax. That's as long as we can agree on that. That's no problem.
So, so why, why is the city of San Gabriel is, is, is having this, you know, subject to, you know, exempt from thirty, thirty day, you know, compared to other cities?
Well, I, I believe that, you know, that the reason I asked that, and then I appreciate Attorney also instrument, answer that question, because the TOT tax is the tax that you collect upfront for us, it's not for you. So when we have like three quarters that we have not collected the tax from you, then we will ask you to pay it. So that, I think that is a point. I mean, it doesn't mean that we, we can exempt the tax. I mean, especially our city is like, we have like two and maybe the third hotel is coming up. We wanna make sure that the old TOT tax will be collected, you know, by all the business owners, including you. So that's, I, and also.
So that's for, you know, everything that's over thirty days, you still collect tax?
Well, actually, that is my, actually question originally, I said, if that will be over thirty days, usually the hotel or motel will probably get another citation from the city or, because it shouldn't be staying more than thirty days. That's the, the key. I mean, it doesn't mean I, we, we will able to exempt the TOT tax because it's over thirty days. But I mean, when I saw the, the photos, it doesn't seem like people can check out and just moving with like a brand-new rooms or something. So sometimes people, they call this like frequent flyers and they just move out and just check in again, like to avoid the thirty days, you know, magic number. So that's why I, I ask, I raise that question. But inhabited, those, those rooms that not really allowed people to live in, but there's never people living that places? Those units that you said uninhabitable?
Yeah.
Units, you have never had anyone live in that space?
Yeah, we have pictures to prove those.
Okay, and then you actually don't, you don't know anything happens before this May? Because you were not really in charge?
We know that all the, there's a lot of showerheads that were all broken.
One thing was the, okay, one thing was the tenant is that because most of them, they're renting that, like paying per month.
Per month?
Per month, so the receipt that we get and that we show or we reimburse it back to them, it's, it's paid by per month or even two months. So, so that's how we, how, how we have that receipt and then reimburse the money back to them.
I see.
And then, so, so, so a lot of time, I, I would assume that if they try to rent it by per day, I mean, if you, I, I, I don't, it's tricky. So, yeah, so most of them, they, they try to live there longer. And then, and then, then what happened is that my father might give them some discount, that's why they pay in advance.
Okay, so, so you're not really renting that as a motel, you're renting that as apartment? Like you pay like a, in advance?
Get as much as anybody that will try to stay there, their money.
Okay.
He even tried to get it in advance.
I see. Got it, got it. Okay. I see, I, so far I don't have any questions. Yes, thank you.
Is there something you'd like to say?
No.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Herrera Avila?
To, to your knowledge, when, when did these rooms become uninhabitable?
I can answer that.
You don't, right, because you weren't involved, right? Just until now, you're involved now at this point.
Right now we're involved and then we're trying to take care of the, the problem right now. Does that need to be paid?
It's just shown from the rooms that a lot of shower, showerheads are broken. And also a lot of rooms don't have the beds for anyone to live in.
And this question to the city, do we have some sort of process when rooms are not inhabitable that we notify the city or something along those lines? Or a process?
Thank you. As to the, whether the rooms were habitable uninhabitable, I mean, the, what our staff saw in that hotel, all of the rooms looked pretty much the same. They were in a very bad shape. That is why the hotel was shut down, one of the reasons. It was full of code violations and, and health hazards. So determining whether ten rooms were habitable, eight weren't, I don't think is the, was the process. This establishment has been on our radar since April of two thousand twenty. We've been sending notices, they've been delinquent. They, they continue to operate in an unlawful manner. We continue to demand payment from them. So this is not, at least shouldn't be a surprise to the, to the owners that we are at this place. But code enforcement does have the power to red-tag or shut down places that create a hazard for habit. So we do have a process for that, council members.
Oh, thank you. My, my following question for the enforcement that went out, what were key indicators that you saw that made you, made you think that they were inhabitable or they're, or not, or people were living there? Was it that there was people coming out of there, where there's possessions that were being removed?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. What you're asking is what were the indicators that it should be shut down?
Can you please let them know who you are and what you do for a living?
Yes. Hi, my name is Aldo Agup, I'm the City of San Gabriel Code Enforcement Officer. For your question, there's multiple reasons why it was shut down. The most visible was sewage that was leaking from the, the ceiling down to the carport area. And then the walkway upstairs was dilapidated to the point where it could have fallen through at any time. The list is, it's a laundry list, but interior mold, health hazards.
So, so my question is, let me rephrase that. So on these pictures that we have, I mean, it clearly looks like, I said, I, I hope nobody was living there. But what are the indicators from these particular rooms that, that we have here in front of us that people were indeed living in? These rooms that look uninhabitable?
So there was multiple personal belongings in each room, signs that people were living in it, and then signs of rooms that we, you know, thought nobody should be living in and we knock on the door and there's people in there. So it's hard to tell who was, what room was not being lived in when every room had personal belongings or decorations, things in that nature.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. Vice Mayor Chan?
Thank you, Mr. Agup. No, well, I, I think I got a good sense. Would, would, would my fellow council members like to hear from Officer on site at the moment? Maybe if she could come?
Yes, she's, she is here.
Gonna give, give a mental, a picture of, of what she witnessed at, at the time?
Hello, good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Officer Esther C. and I've been a police officer for the city of San Gabriel for the past six years. In terms of what I saw at the Champion Motel, when we first arrived, we contacted approximately about thirty to thirty-five people. And we went every day, and when I say we, I'm talking about myself. We also had multiple Los Angeles County organizations who assisted in relocation of these tenants. And throughout the week, we, we met up with these tenants from Tuesday through Friday. Being Friday was our deadline to close the property. However, during that week, we spoke with multiple tenants who lived in these multiple rooms. And when we went home at night, I don't, I don't know who came in or who came out. However, during the week, we did speak to approximately thirty to thirty-five people within those rooms.
And, but you did physically witness, see each one of the rooms? And kind of get a sense for the, the probable habitation of each room? And it looked like most of them were indeed lived in, or?
That's correct. So during the week, we would. So during the week, we would visit each of the rooms to provide relocation and resources for them, such as hotel vouchers or other shelters or housing situations. And on Friday, on our last day, we asked the fire department to come out to assist with opening all the doors because we wanted to make sure that the rooms did not have anybody left over in them. And so we, at the end of the day on Friday, we checked each room to make sure they were empty. And each room that we went in, there was a lot of personal effects that were left behind, such as clothing, personal items.
Okay, so there were personal effects in pretty much every room? It's not like only half the rooms looked lived in? And I'm sure in your experience, you can tell what it looks like when a room is lived in.
That is correct.
So, so it's not like half the rooms were just bare and empty? And, you know, they look like they've been abandoned for whatever months or?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I yield, Madam Mayor.
Okay, are there any more questions from the officer?
Thank you, Esther. So when you, like you say, go to the daytime, the talk to the tenant, so that time, the, you have chance, you say every room, is, did you have a chance to count how many room they had?
We got, we had a chance to speak with all the tenants that were available during the day.
Okay.
However, a lot of the tenants just say their neighbors were either at work or at school. And during the time that we actually assisted with all the tenants, it was during regular business hours.
So the, the question, my question is, did you already, that time have chance? But I don't know, maybe sometimes you just want to help tenant. But did you have a chance to calculate how many room? So you, you really talked to them and evacuation set for the tenant?
So during that time, we did not make a list of how many in particular, how many tenants per room? However, we did go room by room throughout the entire week to speak with the tenants that were living in there.
Thank you. Based, this question for the, sorry, it's for the, for the, for the, for the owner. So based on the, our police or fire, it's calculated like thirty people, thirty-five, the tenant in your facility? I just want to compare with the, if you, the city wanted to talk about eighteen room, you're talking about a room, so if you did use the thirty, if you use the thirty, like people, so if you use a room, each room you ship probably the four person around that to living inside. So that's meaning each room, it's, it's family or?
So I have pictures of.
The question, this question just wanted, wanted to clarify. So should we know it's eighteen room or a room? That's the, I want a reasonable to find out.
Clarify like some of the, how many people in there. There's some rooms that, that have four people. So, and then, so it's, and then a lot of them, as, as you said, they go to work. They don't come back until maybe at night, so she couldn't even see it. Even us, we cannot see that until maybe a certain time. Or until even the last day. The last day that we, we, we went over, hey, you guys need to clear out. And then, and then, and then, and then that's when we might be able to see it. Maybe even some of it, they didn't.
Okay, okay.
Or until even during the weekend.
So that's meaning actually, that's not, that's not a, not a family, that's like some people to share the room? Is that correct?
Oh yeah, one thing I just want to clear out is that, I mean, for the city itself, I had come to city hall, even fire department, asked them for a couple of years, how is my father doing? Because I know he's, he's there doing the motel. You think he's doing great? That's what they told me. And then, and then, and then, and then you guys are, and then they, they, I mean, I mean, everything. I, I was looking at motel, I couldn't surprise that, that they say that, that the motel is doing okay. I mean, for a couple, for a couple of years.
So I, I have two more questions, okay? And so that question, it's, I think it's for the will, okay? For, before the, that, the three quarter, how much T O T tax we collect from them? Each quarter?
I'm trying to recall from memory.
Okay. I, I just, the purpose is of just for some reference to how can we, how we calculate it? City can calculate their T O T or they are really like historical, that they, how much they pay for it? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, just so the, so everyone could hear, can the Champion Motel Group please sit down? And give Julie an opportunity to speak in the mic, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, hello, Council, Julie Garcia with the Finance Department, Revenue Services Specialist. I do the, I mail out all the T O T remittances for all of our motel and hotels. We have five of them here in the city. We do have a long history since Will's been on board about five years, trying to audit and get accurate reporting for the specific operator, documentation of trying to get records requests. On average, they're reporting between two and thirty-five hun, two thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars per quarter. But we haven't been able to get the operators to provide any supporting registers or documentations for the last five years with, meeting with Mr. Long Xiao. And I had never met with the, we haven't met with this current owner until recently. So that's kind of the history.
So, so previous to quarter, just by their honor system, they, they estimate how much they need to pay for it?
That is correct.
So we didn't do the audit?
We've been trying to get them to provide us the documentation for quite some time.
So average, like you say, quarterly, the two thousand to three thousand, right?
Two thousand and thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred, okay. All right, and, and then I saw your, it's a, okay, looks like a difference, it's a, it's like fourteen thousand eight hundred seven, right? Based on the, the staff report? And the, the, it's, it's, I saw the recommendation, it's will total T O T, that, it's, that's meaning they already just only own six thousand three hundred seventy-nine?
So based on the calculation of thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents per night, nightly rate, and eighteen occupied units, the T O T liability is nineteen thousand one hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
That's for the A unit?
That's eighteen unit.
Oh, eighteen unit.
For eight units, the T O T liability is six thousand three hundred and seventy-nine and sixty-five cents.
Six thousand, that's A unit?
That's A, yes, yes, Councilmember Winkding.
So, so actually your recommendation is just charging them the A unit?
What? Based on the evidence, we believe that eighteen units were occupied.
Okay. A little bit confused for the recommendation, so say they just own us the six thousand? Or they own us the?
The, it is the full amount, which is nineteen thousand one hundred and seven dollars and seventy-five cents, which would represent T O T from eighteen of twenty units.
Okay.
The owner is saying that it was only eight of the twenty units. That's a difference of about twelve thousand dollars.
Okay. But for the, okay, twelve, difference twelve, okay, okay, I saw that, yeah, okay. So, so tonight, it's, we just want to find out or determine it's, it's an eighteen unit and a A unit, right? Between that, okay. All right. Okay, so I, 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 yes, thank you, the mayor.
Okay.
So I want to listen to your, your.
Great, well, mine's pretty clear, I mean, I've listened to the, well, I've read the agenda, I've listened to the testimony, I appreciate all the questions from my colleagues, but I'm ready to move forward. And so I like to make a motion to uphold the Finance Director's determination at the nineteen thousand one oh seven point seven five. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry. We would like to include a timing of the payment in.
Oh, so you want me to amend that?
This, the code provides for an immediate payment. So we would request that whatever decision council reaches, whatever motion is, is approved by the council, includes a deadline by which this payment must be made, thank you.
And so would the deadline just be immediate, or what, what is the deadline?
The code provides for immediate payment, I don't think that means tonight. But we would request that, if possible, at the end of the week, so you would receive the money.
So I will amend my motion to.
And I, I need to add something too, just for clarity of the record.
Well, why don't you make the motion?
No, no, I'm not going to make the motion. But I, but we just, I just want to make it clear that you're closing the hearing and that we're accepting into evidence all of the materials that have been presented, including the photos that, and other documents requested by the owner. And that your decision will be based on all of the evidence in front of you, the written statements, the statements of the witnesses and so forth.
Yes, but do we have to include that in the motion? You've just clarified it.
Yeah, that could be part of the motion.
Okay, so I will, again, amend my motion to say that I, I move to uphold the Finance Director's determination at nineteen thousand one oh seven point seven five, to be paid by the end of the week. And this is after accepting all the evidence, the testimony, and what was, and written statement. So that is my amended motion. Do you want to have a second?
May I discuss or how does that technically go? I mean.
Oh, you can approve it and then we can discuss it if you want. I, I just need a second for the motion.
Okay, yeah, sure, I'll, I'll, well, I'll second and then.
Okay.
Well, but I, I have, I have kind of a, an amendment to the motion, so I don't know if we can.
Okay, well, why don't you tell me what the amendment is?
Would it, would it be okay for the rest of the council if we could give them thirty days?
Okay, accept that amendment.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
So then will you second?
Yeah, I second the whole.
Should I repeat it again? No, okay.
Amended by thirty-day deadline instead of.
Immediate.
Yes.
End of the week, okay, great, so we have a first and second, no more deliberation.
The motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. Next item?
Draft Historic Resources Survey Report Phase Two, Resolution Number Twenty-five dash thirty-five. Acting Community Development Director Tuas Art will make the presentation.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is the Citywide Historic Resources Survey Phase Two. This project is a continuation of the city's historic preservation efforts and work program. To provide a brief overview of the timeline and the background leading up to this Phase Two report, the efforts began in September of 2020, when the city retained the services of Architectural Resources Group, A R G, to prepare the city's historic context statement. Then in October of 2021, the City Council approved the citywide context statement and also a second agreement for A R G to continue work on the Citywide Historic Resources Survey Report Phase One, to identify eligible historic resources, including individual resources, non-parcel resources and districts. And then in October of 2023, the City Council approved the survey report Phase One and also a third agreement with A R G to further continue work on the Historic Resources Survey Report Phase Two, to further evaluate and document the potential historic districts and planning districts that were identified in Phase One. And here we are this evening, August of 2025, and the Draft Citywide Historic Resources Survey Report Phase Two is presented to the City Council for consideration. As a reminder to the City Council, the historic context statement served as the framework for both Phase One and Phase Two survey reports. Seven major contexts were identified for the evaluation of historic resources in San Gabriel. The first six are organized by, by time periods and also capture major patterns and trends of the city's development history. And the seventh context identifies and defines the architectural styles that are reflected in every phase of development in San Gabriel. So starting with San Gabriel pre seventeen seventy-five, followed by the Spanish colonial Mexican era settlement seventeen seventy-five to eighteen forty-eight, then San Gabriel's early development eighteen forty-nine to nineteen twelve, and then San Gabriel becomes a city in nineteen thirteen to nineteen thirty. And San Gabriel during the Depression and wartime years nineteen thirty-one to nineteen forty-five, and post-World War II development in San Gabriel nineteen forty-six to nineteen eighty. And the last context would be architecture and design throughout the past two hundred and five years in the city of San Gabriel. And context is important in identifying and evaluating broad patterns of residential development and settlement and cohesive collections of residences, which will be one of the items discussed tonight. The draft survey report Phase Two was presented to the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission at its July thirtieth meeting, and the H P C R C voted unanimously to recommend approval to the City Council. The recommendation before the City Council this evening is to adopt Resolution Twenty-five dash thirty-five of the City Council of San Gabriel, California approving the Citywide Historic Resources Survey Report Phase Two. If approved, next steps would include further community outreach and workshops, defining the review process for identified resources, and drafting design guidelines to assist property owner and designers with design standards. These steps will continue with the guidance and oversight of the city's Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, as well as with the Design Review Commission. Presenting the project this evening is Katie Horick with Architectural Resource Group, A R G. And also present this evening is Jennifer Mamiliad, the city's architectural historian, who is also available for any technical questions. And so with that, I will pass the presentation to Katie.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Katie Horick and I'm a principal with Architectural Resources Group. And I'm very pleased to be here tonight to provide a recap of Phase Two of the San Gabriel Historic Resources Survey. So as you know, and Samantha just presented our timeline, we conducted a citywide historic resources survey of San Gabriel, spouted out over two phases over the course of three years. So what we're presenting tonight is the culmination of our work of the Phase Two survey, which focused on the documentation of historic districts. So I know it's been several years since we first started our work on this project and I, I thought it might be helpful to provide just a quick refresher on how the survey was phased, phased, and what scope of work was included within each phase. So as mentioned, there were two phases to the citywide survey project, and all of that work built upon the citywide historic context statement, which was also prepared by A R G and completed back in 2021. So generally speaking, Phase One included a reconnaissance survey of the entire city, preliminary identification of all potential historic resources, including individuals and historic districts and non-parcel resources, and an intensive level survey of individually eligible properties and non-parcel resources. Phase One process benefited from community outreach, continuous coordination with city staff and the city's historic preservation consultant, review and feedback by the H P C R C, and a number of public meetings, which you can see on the screen outright. The work completed under Phase One really laid the groundwork for the work done in Phase Two, so I thought it might be helpful to provide a little bit more detail about the Phase One scope, just as a refresher. The first step included some general research. The first step included some general research about the city's development patterns, building on the work of the context statement and community outreach. The second step was a citywide reconnaissance survey. During the reconnaissance survey, our team drove every single street of San Gabriel and looked at every single property. This gives our team an in-depth understanding of the city's potential historic resources, including areas that contain cohesive historic character that might be eligible as historic districts. At the end of the reconnaissance survey, we had a draft list of potentially eligible properties and historic districts that were then shared with city staff and summarized in a meeting with the HPCRC. The final step of Phase One was to conduct supplemental property-specific research about all individually eligible resources and document them using standardized forms. Phase One did not include documentation of historic districts, as that was postponed to Phase Two, and all work on Phase One was finalized in the fall of 2023. The Phase Two survey is the focus of this presentation this evening, and it is the phase that we are now just wrapping up. Phase Two included additional research and evaluation of potential historic districts. Building on the work done in the reconnaissance survey of Phase One, our Phase Two, in Phase Two, our team revisited all of those potential districts, did district-specific research, identified contributors and non-contributors within the districts, and refined the historic district boundaries. And again, this work benefited from collaboration with city staff and the city's historic preservation consultant, as well as review by the HPCRC in a series of meetings. So I'll just spend a few minutes talking about how we approached the Phase Two survey to give you a sense of our methodology. The first step was to conduct additional background research. Let's see. The survey identified, oh, sorry. In Phase One, we did some preliminary research about potential districts, but the focus of Phase One was really on individual properties. So for Phase Two, we were really able to dig much deeper into the research as it relates to the historic districts. Our team conducted focused research on each potential historic district to learn more about its origins and developmental history. We consulted a variety of research materials, including historic tract and zoning maps, historic aerial images, which helped us understand development patterns over time, and building permit records, which provided more granular information about particular properties. We also used new superarchives to provide information about each district. After finishing our research, our team went back out into the field to conduct an intensive survey of each district. We collected field data on tablets using a mobile documentation app called Fulcrum. We walked every single street in every district and collected data about each individual property, including its architectural style, its date of construction, architectural features, and visible alterations. We also took note of things like street lighting and street trees, circulation patterns, and other site and landscape features that are found throughout the district and contribute to its overall sense of place. Survey data was collected from the public right-of-way, which is consistent with professional practices, so we did not access any private properties as part of our work or go, or go inside any buildings. So this is just what we see on our end when we conduct our survey work. Pictured on the screen is, the screen is the Fulcrum interface. We start by looking at a geo referenced map of each district, which is at left. Each dot on the map represents an individual property. We click on each dot, and it brings up the data fields that we're able to populate. The data fields have been customized so that they directly correspond to the fields that are used to populate DPR forms, which is the standardized state forms that we use in our survey work. And this helps to streamline the process, that we're able to populate this in the field where we're standing in front of each property, to ensure that the data is collected in a very consistent manner. So as part of the data collection process, each property was classified as either a contributor or a non-contributor. We use National Park Service guidance for determining what makes a property a contributor versus a non-contributor. Contributors are properties that were built within the district's period of historical development, which we call a period of significance, reflect the historic associations of the character of that district, and retain historic integrity. So they need to retain all three of those criteria. And it's important to note that a property can have some alterations and still be a contributor, as long as those alterations haven't significantly impacted the building's appearance, such that it doesn't reflect its historic character anymore. Non-contributors either post-date the period of significance, do not reflect the historic associations, or do not retain historic integrity due to extensive alterations. Common examples of extensive alterations are large additions, the replacement of original wall cladding with an incompatible material, or the resizing of original window openings. Once we had assessed all contributors and non-contributors, we could determine whether there was enough contribution within each district to make it eligible for designation. And in San Gabriel's case, that is fifty-one percent or more, and I just want to say that fifty-one percent is just a small majority of contributing properties, which is a quite lenient threshold for historic districts. Typically, we use a threshold of about sixty-five percent for state and national eligibility, and some cities have a much higher threshold. Even than that, we see sometimes cities with a seventy-five percent threshold. So San Gabriel's ordinance is actually quite lenient in that regard when it comes to the overall percentage of district contributors. So I thought it might be helpful to show some examples of how we distinguish between contributors and non-contributors. This is the Mount Vernon Park Historic District, and the properties on the top row were classified as contributors. They retain most, if not all, of their historic forum, massing, and materials. Properties on the bottom row were classified as non-contributors. The property at bottom left has been altered to the extent that it no longer reads as a nineteen forties residence. The property in the middle has an upper story addition that overwhelms the original house, and the property at the bottom right features non-historic stucco cladding and the replacement of windows, and new openings that have diminished its historic character. So I just want to make a quick note about windows, because there are often a lot of questions about whether homeowners can change their windows, if they live in a historic district and still be a contributor, or if having non-historic windows would make something a non-contributor. So I just would like to note that the building at top right, which is a contributor, does have replacement vinyl windows, and you'll notice that those windows are within the original window openings, and therefore this building still really has its historic character, so it remains a contributor. Whereas the house at bottom right has also had its windows replaced, however, the window opening sizes have been modified, and the frames modified too, and that is a less reversible change. This house has also been clad with a rough stucco, and overall, it doesn't retain sufficient character to make it a contributor. So just because a one, a building has had its windows replaced does not necessarily mean that it's automatically a non-contributor. This is just a few more examples. This is from the Rosemont Park Historic District. Again, the properties in the top row are contributing properties, and the bottom row are representative non-contributors. The non-contributors here on this screen were mostly built outside of the historical period of development or the period of significance, or have been altered in such a way that they no longer convey their historic character. So once we had done more intensive survey of all districts, additional research and identified our contributors and non-contributors, we refined the district boundaries. And it's important to note that sometimes our findings from the reconnaissance survey might change once we really dig further into the research. Our methodology for determining historic boundaries is based also on National Park Service guidelines, and we determine boundaries based on the following. District-specific research, so sometimes, but not always, district boundaries might reflect a subdivision boundary or a neighborhood boundary. Integrity, we might shave off small areas of historic district on the edge. If the buildings on the edge do not retain integrity, we'll just modify the boundary to not include those non-contributors. We look at natural and man-made features, such as major highways, or roads, or other barriers, and boundaries most always include buildings of consistent character and pattern of development. Finally, donut holes, what we call donut holes, are not allowed, which means that all properties within a boundary must be included in the district. There can't be a smaller area within that boundary that does not include the district. So this was certainly not the case for all the districts that we identified in San Gabriel, but the Rosemont Park Historic District boundary pretty closely mimic the historic tract boundaries, as you can see in the slide. So this is just one example of how we would rely on the tract map research to help us define our boundaries, but like I mentioned, not all districts' boundaries were delineated in this way. So in addition to the seven potential historic districts, the survey identified three potential planning districts or conservation overlay zones. In the Phase One survey, these were called planning districts, but in our conversations with staff and the city's historic preservation consultant, we realized that the city's ordinance refers to these areas as conservation overlay zones, and we wanted to make sure these terms that were used in the survey align with those in the ordinance. So you're going to see here some interchange of those two terms. Integrity is what distinguishes the planning districts from historic districts. Planning districts are cohesive areas with a distinctive sense of place or a shared history, however, they fall short of that fifty-one percent contribution that's needed for a historic district to qualify them as historic districts. They still reflect a special quality of the city's character, however, they are not intact enough to be historic districts. All three of the planning districts that we identified were near the central heart of this, I'm sorry, you know what? I skipped ahead here. Apologies. I got a little mixed up with my slides. So just, sorry, to go back a little bit, the, the survey identified seven potential historic districts in the city. Collectively, these districts contain a total of six hundred and ninety properties, all seven, and I will get back to the planning districts. All seven districts were preliminary identified in the Phase One survey. We didn't identify any new districts. Everything had already been identified. All are residential in use and consist of visually cohesive, single-family neighborhoods that were developed prior to World War II. Geographically, they are all located in the northern portion of San Gabriel, north of Las Tunas Drive, which is consistent with the city's historic subdivisions and development patterns. So I'll just spend a minute summarizing each of the districts that we identified. On each map, green parcels represent contributing properties, and the yellow parcels represent properties that were identified as individually eligible in the Phase One survey and also as contributing to the historic districts in, as part of Phase Two. The gray parcels that you see, the dark gray, are the non-contributing properties. On the left is the California Street Historic District, which is a small historic district comprising nineteen properties, of which sixteen or eighty-four percent are contributors. It is located on California Street between Rosa's Road to the north and Hermosa Drive to the south. All properties in this district are single-family residences. And on the right, you see the Country Club Crest Historic District, which comprises a hundred and forty-four properties, of which a hundred or sixty-nine percent are contributors. This district is primarily composed of period revival, single-family residences, with a few low-scale multifamily dwellings, like duplexes, within the boundary. On the left is Country Club Drive Historic District, which is another small district of twenty-four properties, of which twenty-one or eighty-eight percent are contributors. As you can see with the yellow shading, which is barely distinguishable on the screen here, a few of these properties were also, or actually quite a few, were also identified as individually eligible as part of Phase One. The district is on the west side of Country Club Drive, between Rosa's Road to the north and Las Tunas Drive to the south. All of the properties in this district are single-family residences constructed in period revival and other early to mid-twentieth century styles. And then on the right, we have the Mount Vernon Park Historic District, which comprises seventy properties total, of which forty-nine or seventy percent are contributing. All contributing properties in this district were constructed in a period of two years, nineteen forty to nineteen forty-one, and represent the minimal traditional style. On the left here is the Oak Knoll Historic District, which comprises ninety-eight properties, of which seventy-six or seventy-eight percent are contributors. All properties within this district are single-family residences in period revival and minimal traditional styles. And on the right is the Old Mill Vista Historic District, which contains sixty-eight properties, of which fifty-five or eighty-one percent are contributors. Again, all properties in this district are single-family residences designed in period revival and other minimal traditional styles. And then finally, the last historic district is the Rosemont Park Historic District. This is the largest of all the districts that we identified, and Rosemont Park contains two hundred and sixty-seven properties, of which two hundred and eighteen or eighty-two percent are contributing. Nearly all contributing buildings are single-family residences in Rosemont Park, although the district also includes a small cluster of low-scale commercial buildings on North San Marino Avenue, which developed contemporaneously with the adjacent residential blocks. So I will not go back over the planning districts, which are already described, but I will show you them here. Also, all three of these planning districts are located near the geographic center of the city. They include the San Gabriel Village, which you see at left, and the San Gabriel, the central San Gabriel Planning District outright. And then the third planning district that we identified was the Mission District. So finally, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the few differences between the preliminary assessment of districts in the Phase One survey and the more detailed evaluations that were completed as part of the Phase Two work. So you may have noticed that some of the difference have slightly different names. Typically, this is because additional information was uncovered when we did our background research. For instance, what had been called the Mission Nostron Domingo District was renamed the Old Mill Vista Historic District to reflect the original subdivision name. In some cases, district boundaries were adjusted to account for additional research and field work. For instance, when we researched the Jerona Avenue Historic District, we added several adjacent blocks, so that the district boundary would correspond with the original subdivision boundary. And finally, the Mission District, which had been identified as a potential historic district in Phase One, was reclassified as a potential planning district or conservation overlay zone in the Phase Two survey. This decision was informed by our fieldwork. So once we got back into the area and walked every street and looked at every single property and started getting into the weeds of documentation, we discovered that many of the buildings were already more altered than we had originally realized, and there are a number of parking lots and other contemporary intrusions that compromise integrity. But I do want to note that, of course, the Mission is designated, and the Mission complex already and protected. We just found that the Mission District is better classified as a planning district than a historic district. So once the fieldwork was completed, we reviewed and analyzed the data and compiled everything into a draft survey report. We have since finalized the report based on city and commission feedback, and this is what is before you today. The report includes a detailed discussion of our methodology and detailed information about each potential historic district and planning district. The report also includes two appendices. Appendix A includes a property list for each district organized by street and address, which lists each property's contributor status and associated status code. Appendix B includes DPR forms for each district, including a detailed description and an evaluation of eligibility against criteria. And as you can see, we are just about the end of our timeline here, and we're very thankful to all of you for your and the HPCRC's review and assistance along the way, which is bring, which is what brings us to tonight's request for adoption of the findings of the survey. So thank you so much for your attention to my long presentation, and I am here and happy to answer questions. I know that staff and the city's historic preservation consultant are also here and happy to answer questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, did you want to say a few words, or?
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Jen Mammiliad. I'm the city architectural historian. And I'll just point out to you that I was brought on board in July of 2021, so right as the context statement was coming to a close. I did have the opportunity to review that, but it was more of a bird's eye level review, so I could just take a look at overall methodology and level of effort and give some general feedback. But I, I continued on and have walked every step, almost, with the consulting team and have been at all of the HPCRC commission meetings and heard all the presentations. And throughout the way, I, I met with the consultant doing the work. We reviewed all of the findings, and I, I certainly questioned things that I saw on behalf of the city or on behalf of the public, whether it came to district boundaries or why something was included as a contributor or a non-contributor, et cetera. So just to make that point, that I, I'm very familiar with the process, and it was definitely in keeping with professional standards and guidelines, so I'm here to answer any questions that may have.
Thank you. Now I'm going to call up the chairperson for the historical, what's the name? Preservation and resources. I'll just call it historical preservation.
We do have the most beastly commission name.
Yes, maybe one day we'll change that name.
But if you could please introduce yourself, and I know you have some of your team members
here, and you have been here since the day this commission has started. It was the same year I started too, 2017. Great year. But if you can, please give us your perspective, since you've been very involved with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Minchaca and council. I really am very excited to stand here tonight with the historic survey before you. And it's true, I've been involved since the founding of the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission. But as I sat listening to the timeline and looking at the presentation, I thought I also am a member of the if-only club, because for me, this has been-- also am a member of the "if only" club, because for me, this has been a two-decade-long wish to have this work brought before you. When we first organized around La Laguna Playground as Friends of La Laguna, we did not have an ordinance that could be effectively enforced. We did not have a commission that could review any of the buildings or sites that were of importance, and we did not have our historic context survey. We did not have any of the inventories or surveys that we now are fortunate to have as part of our toolkit. And so I really am excited to see this more recent endeavor come to a close, because as a member of the commission, this gives us the ability to attach the things that are important to us in San Gabriel to the context in which we think they originated, to evaluate them using the tools that are established by federal, state, and our own local guidelines, and to hopefully stave off more members of the "if only" club. If only we had started this sooner, we might be able to have a historic district in the Mission District rather than a planning district. If only we had started this sooner, maybe the village would be an intact historic district and not just a planning district. And if only we had started this earlier, maybe we would be able to tell the story of our barrio really as a historic district rather than just as a planning district. As a member of the community, a resident of San Gabriel who has worked in preservation, I have done the work of writing nominations for La Laguna Playground at the state and national level. I have written the nomination for a playhouse. The amount of work that you see in this report is phenomenal, and I am so excited, as I think my fellow commissioners were, to look through and to see the DPRs. But at the same time, there's disappointment. There's disappointment that we don't meet the threshold for the Mission District to be an actual district. And I know in talking with community members, there is disappointment in the inclusion or exclusion of properties from this report. But I do have tremendous confidence in the process that was undertaken, the criterion that was applied, and in the final product that is before you. And I think it is going to be an amazing living document for the city. There will be additions, I hope. I would be delighted if there aren't many deletions, that we do our job preserving the resources that we have. But I really am very excited to take all of these reports out on the road as a commission and as a city, and to keep telling the stories that make our city so special. So you have my resounding support of the report that's in front of you. I think I can speak for my fellow commissioners as well. We did unanimously vote to bring it to you for your consideration this evening. But as Katie and Jennifer have said, I'm here and available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we go to public comment, does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few questions. First, I want to start with a comment. Thank you so much. I was going through all of this as a new council member. I was just blown away with the amount of time and data and effort that went into this. It was just amazing, and I can't say that I went through all of it, because I went through this Phase 2 part, and I tried to go back to the beginning, and it's hundreds and hundreds of pages from Phase 1. And to the commission, Chair Lubasic, I hope I said that right.
Insania.
Yeah, I mean, kudos to you for standing up for this. My question, if we can go to Rosemont Park, can we go on to that slide? My question is going to revolve around Phase 1 on Rosemont Park. Were more houses included in Phase 1 before you found out, did more digging?
It was actually expanded, I believe, in Phase 2, once we did more research.
And can I ask, why was it expanded? What was the identifying reason?
So, and this happens quite a lot. When we're doing our initial reconnaissance survey, we're driving every single street, and it's a first take, so we're really just making notes about places that have cohesive character that we want to come back to and do more cohesive research. And so it's often that we'll, you know, be driving down the street, and you can kind of see at the southern end, there are streets that have more non-contributors. We might say, maybe these won't be included, but let's do more research about them. So it often happens that we'll do more research, we'll understand better the tract boundaries and the patterns of development, and we might refine the boundaries based on the property and the district-specific research. So it's not uncommon that we might have an initial finding, finding the recon, and then do a lot more research and have a slightly different finding.
And from reading Phase 2 and understanding it, thank you, Kathy. I have more questions, a lot more questions. And I understand that it was possibly expanded because it was originally a property of what sounds like a very important person, the second mayor of Los Angeles, Ben Benito Wilson, right? I did a little bit of my homework. And that was a particular place where there was possibly a garden, is that correct? With some exotic trees, from doing my research? Is that correct?
Yes.
So here's my dilemma, and it's an interesting dilemma, because I got a lot of inquiry from the residents around this area in particular and some other areas, and they wished that they would have been included, particularly, like, let's just say, for example, Rosemont from Hermosa down, I think there's, I was doing some driving around, and there's a lot of homes with a lot of good character. Specifically, there's a beautiful house, I don't know if it was a contributor, I think I seen it on the news, on Hermosa Drive, south of Sycamore Drive. It's like a cottage home, beautiful. I don't know if that one was included, but I kind of want to understand why not expand that down a little bit and the factors of why. Because there's a lot of beautiful homes, and I was walking the streets, and they look like contributors to me.
So as part of our work, we found that when you go south of Hermosa Drive, there's just a little bit more of, there's more non-contributors than contributors. So that does not mean that there aren't still lovely historic homes south of that boundary, but we found that the overall cohesiveness of the district really started to, it was just more, a higher percentage of non-contributors south of Hermosa, which is why we drew the boundary the way that we did.
Right, because to me, it looks like a solid line right there for anybody, you know, that could be interpreting this as like just a solid line, and why not include a couple more we want to preserve? And not only to the south, but in all directions, right? It looks just like a block to me, right? And I'm pretty sure there were some more houses that we could have probably included, especially with this area, with how many, how much percentage were contributors. It looks, almost all of it looks green to me.
It's a high percentage. You know, I think this is really based, the boundaries are based on a number of things. Like I said, they're based on our research, they're based on tract map and subdivision boundaries. This is a case where we followed the tract maps pretty rigorously, and they really made sense in terms of the character of the district, and also just on the percentage of contribution. That is not to say that if a community wanted to move forward with a district nomination later, and they really wanted to include properties and want to make a case for that, that may be a possibility, but this is certainly our professional recommendation for what the appropriate boundary might be.
Right. And you mentioned tracts. If you can explain that, what does that mean?
So when, so a lot of San Gabriel and a lot of the San Gabriel Valley was just farmland or large open expanses of land or large gardens and properties. And so when those owners decided it was time to subdivide their property, they would be subdivided into a series of tracts. So that's, when I showed the image of the tract maps, those were the tracts that basically he took his large property and then parceled it out and sold that off for residential development.
Interesting. So, because I was trying to look at these, like this particular map, and I think it took me down a rabbit hole to like the Huntington Library or something with this map that I couldn't really understand, and I'm sure you use that as one of your factors, but I'm trying to understand, how did we come up with Hermosa? If those maps were like very hard for me to read.
Hermosa was the south boundary of the tract, of the historic tract. Like I said, we don't always follow the tract boundaries, but in this case, it made sense to us, just based on the change of contribution percent of south of Hermosa.
So if people wanted to do a present a case, they could potentially expand these boundaries?
Designation would be a whole other process, an additional process, and there's the possibility that that process could recommend an expanded boundary for local designation, which, like I said, is a different process. I'm not sure if you'd like to jump in here.
I would love to answer that question for you. That's a bit more of a city-specific question, so I'll give Katie a break there. Yes, there is a process to designation, which would follow this process if the residents of this district were interested in pursuing designation, or an application could be brought forward by any city agency or the commission. And we could certainly look at, again, at surrounding boundaries at that time. Additional survey work would need to be done in order to consider additional properties as part of the boundary, but there is a place in the process for that, to do that. And so that's covered under the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Preservation Ordinance. That process for designation involves getting a petition of 51% of the residents to be interested in designating. We hold a public hearing to determine if we should move forward with even entertaining that. A public workshop is done, and then, of course, it goes before the cultural, the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission as well as you. So there's certainly more opportunity in the future. Because this survey is complete with the boundaries that it has, just knowing the process that it's been, is gone through, and I certainly commiserate with you on reading the historic maps, it does become a bit of a language that you learn, as well as historic handwriting and et cetera. So I do feel that the process was pretty exhaustive, the methodology was intact and according to industry and professional standards. So I know that a number of things went into defining the boundaries the way they are, so I have great confidence in the findings and support them. But that does not mean that we can't relook at things at the time that a district is brought forward for designation.
So, but from my understanding is that we, you guys have the data, right? We have the data, so I'm trying to understand why would we have to conduct another survey? We have the data.
Yes, we do, and that data was analyzed by the professional consultants, meeting the Secretary of the Interior Standards for professional qualifications, as I do. And the determination was made that the boundary, the fringe or edge of this boundary here simply did not rise to the threshold that would allow for inclusion in this district. So I can't speak to it more because I didn't do the survey myself, but perhaps Katie can. Other than that, I don't know the specific reasons why individual properties may be excluded, but just the large picture of, say, there was another tract to the south, and maybe one part of one street of that tract may contribute or seem like it goes along with these others in terms of its historic character or its period of significance. But that's not to say the entire tract does, and to separate that out from the previous subdivision and development is a question that has to be looked at. Does it even relate to the same period of history? I'm not sure, so.
Yeah, because a lot of the houses here surrounding the area, not only here, but in different other, in the other historic districts, I mean, there are some houses that could have, that met the threshold and could have possibly been included. Like a lot of, I did my homework around this area, and a lot of the homes there are like 1920 with very minimal alterations. I know that, I know that if, in the contract, right, that we have with the agency, it says that they would deliver, like this council meeting, the deliberations of the final report, and all that work already came about. But if we were to consider including other homes to the tract right now that we have this in hand and expanding some of these districts, how, maybe a question to Mark, how would, how would, how do we, would we go about that?
I was going to also ask the, our commission chair also, because I know this would have to go back to them also, but want to start, Mark, and then we'll have Insania, or either way you want. Insania, okay, go ahead.
Oh, I just, I think if we're talking about the process of how this was done, it's important to understand that our commission has to have a professional historian and a professional architect, and I serve the role of professional historian on the commission. When we're talking about doing historical research, you want to be rooted in evidence. And so as you heard, Hermosa was the traditional boundary line of that tract. And when we can go back and define a district based on historical documents, that is the best way to define a district. And so to link this in terms of the story of our city, back to BD Wilson, back to the very beginnings of our city, that is a cohesive narrative that fits with a cohesive architecture that all bears out in the evidence that we have. When we start expanding and making those boundaries different and deviating from the historical record that we have, then we're altering the narrative that we're trying to tell or the story that we're telling about how those homes came to be. And I too have been speaking with residents who feel concerned about not being included. I have heard concerns that all of our districts are in the north and not in the south. But I'm quick to point out that most of our Mills Act contracts that we have actually fall outside of the boundaries. We have several that are below Hermosa, we have others that are below Las Tunas. So there's a great amount of work that we still can do, looking at individual properties. But when we're talking about a cohesive district from a historical standpoint, rooting it in the historical record, as a historian to me, is most important.
Oh, to that point, right, are there other areas that we did not link it to a historical, like for this, for this instant, we linked it to that historical parcel where it was sold off, right? For the other areas, I feel it was more like, like the individual contributor, we were looking at the story of the individual house and what it might have and the history that it tells and that it paints, right? Is that correct?
For individual properties, there's always the potential to do that level of research. But in the Phase 2 survey, the goal and really the hope of our commission was to establish what the districts are, because that's work as a commission, that's a very, very heavy lift to do. So to have the boundaries tied to our context statement, to come out of our Phase 1 inventory, and then define using the historical record was something that we felt would be of great service, not just to our commission, but to the city as a whole.
Interesting. So to that, to that point, and I appreciate that, and to that point, if we were to, if we were to, later on, let's just say, we were to later on try to expand, how would that even play about? I mean, at that point, to your, to your point, then that would be a separate district, it wouldn't be a contributor to that particular district.
Our commission feels very confident in the research that was done and in the definitions of the boundaries that were set. As I shared in my initial comments, I'm disappointed that the Mission District doesn't rise to the level that's needed to be a historic district, and that's the reality of this work. We all have attachments. Even in my very first work in preservation with La Laguna Playground, we had fond memories. We loved the park, but we didn't know if it had historic significance. We had to settle that question, and we did that by going to professionals who helped us understand the broader patterns, the different criterion, and that's what we have done here and in the boundaries that we have for the districts we have. I am confident, as a historian and as a member of the commission, that we've met the threshold that's needed to define those boundaries. As you heard from the team, to redo boundaries is a different survey. And as a historian, I again really do rely on the historical record. To me, that makes for the story that we're trying to tell.
So then to the question then, so if we wanted to come back and add to that district, then to your point, then that would have to be a separate district, not an addition, because that would distort that history.
So if I can put on my professor hat, this would be where I would tell a student that they are coming with an idea-driven paper rather than a source-driven paper. If we found new research that indicated that there was a district or something that we could put together, a tract that came to our attention, a different map, a different part of our story, then that might be a reason for me to say, let's pursue this as a district. Because we like the way things look or we want them to be a certain way, that's coming at the end of a process where we really ought to have the sources in place before we start talking about changing boundaries or districts.
So then, so then potentially then they wouldn't be able to add on?
I would say, based on our historical research, this is a very well-defined district. If there were areas to the south, they might have a different context, they might have a different boundary, they might have a different tract designation. Or as you've heard, and this is where I'm part of the "if only" club, if only we hadn't allowed for modifications, if only we hadn't torn down houses, I too have been walking this on the corner of Rosemont going south, there's a huge newer property that was built that in other neighborhoods might have sparked a McMansion outcry. That's something that erodes the integrity of the district. So in that sense, it's that if only we had acted sooner... So in that sense, it's that if only we had acted sooner, then we might have been able to preserve the integrity beyond the boundaries that you're seeing.
May I just add something? So I, I think we have to understand there's historic districts and then there's districts. And so it's not going to prevent that lower part of Hermosa on, we're focused on Rosemont obviously, because I think we have some residents here, but we're, we're very focused on, we can still have a district, it just won't be historic, because we are bounded by that criteria, if we like it or not. We can't be arbitrary, but if we create districts, not historic, we can do that, or I'm sorry, the commission could do something like that.
So in our ordinance, you have the opportunity for a conservation overlay zone, which would mean that you're preserving the character, the feel of a neighborhood, but it may not rise to the threshold of a historic district.
Exactly, and I think that's where we're kind of stuck, because that bar is so high and there's been, I mean, I, I hear it all the time, not just with our, our friends out there, but just in general, you know, my house is historic, you know, I know it's historic, but then when you actually look at the eligibility, whether it's the material or a whole host of things, it's not. And so, but, but we can continue, this, this report, this survey, doesn't mean that the door is shut. We can continue on, we can have, redefine certain areas, might not be historic, because, you know, it's already been done and evaluated, but we can still do districts.
And I think it's important to note that the survey itself doesn't create the district. That is still another process of going through with our commission. And actually, as Jennifer Merely had explained, holding workshops and surveying the residents, because if the residents do not want this to be a district, it will not be a district. Similarly, an individual property that is not included in a district doesn't, it doesn't mean that that property can't itself be a historic structure. All of these require processes. Similarly, when we define a district, not every owner is automatically a Mills Act property. All of these are separate processes that residents have to be active participants in. This is just giving us the tools to be able to pursue those types of, of opportunities in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm still trying to grapple between how we're linking this to an actual person that sold a lot versus the main criteria of a property or an era, right? We have like the 20, like 1920s, that period, that time zone where we had a lot of Spanish homes, and that's the charm and the character of this particular area south and, and all around this area. So I'm trying to grapple between, between those two understandings.
So I think you're answering your own question in some ways, because you're identifying that we have those eras, those are the seven chapters of our context statement. So those are sort of the broad parameters in terms of developments in the city, whether it is pre-Spanish, Spanish, Mexican, Anglo onward. Those are the time periods that we're using, and within that you have figures like BD Wilson who are going to own properties. Those are all part of connecting present-day construction back through time in our history. And so when we say that you have the Rosemont Park tract, we are connecting it to that time period, to the figures, to the history, we're telling that story in the built environment.
Got it.
Councilmember, could I just, I'd like the public to also speak, so there is time for more deliberation afterwards.
Can I ask more questions after?
Yeah, of course, of course. I just want to make, I've just seen some people leave and I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak during public comment and the call, my colleagues, if you want to ask factual questions, but I like to try to move forward with the.
As long as I can ask questions.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, this is strictly factual, although we've, it's become deliberation, but it's not, it's after public comment. Okay, so I'm going to now ask the city clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do, Madam Mayor. Please note that the city council received a written comment in support from Lori Ramirez requesting that any houses built in the 20s on Padilla Street be added to the Mission District map. Our first speaker is Beatrice Moharo.
Good evening, Mayor Minchaca and councils. My name is Beatrice Moharo. I am, I am a, I'm a member, a commissioner on the historical preservation and, actually yes, I am vice chair. I am vice chair. I'm also resident.
You almost sound like me. Oh, yeah, I'm the vice mayor. Yeah, sure.
We have, we have a great chair, that's why, I mean.
Great, excellent.
Excellent chair. And actually, on that, I agree with a lot of what she has said, and as a commissioner, we understand the study that was done, how long and how intensive it was. We do, we do understand that it's, it's not, it's not going to be perfect for everyone. What I believe as a resident, not as a commissioner, and I agree with, with Mayor Minchaca, that these overlay districts can also be districts. And not to open a can of worms, but I would love for the momentum of this study of, of these districts to continue, that the city invest in that, because we truly are decades and decades behind. And if you see neighboring cities, they have districts throughout their cities. There's no reason why San Gabriel cannot have districts throughout the city, being as historical as we are, historically rich, there's so much to pull from. And it doesn't have to, you know, just be architectural history. It's beautiful to have that and preserve that, and it's very important to have that. But I would encourage you to continue the momentum as a council, that this not stop here and that it's not delayed to continue including other districts or researching other districts, potential districts. And again, they don't necessarily have to be, you know, in regards to architecture. There is nothing really in our city that identifies or honors the, the early inhabitants of this area. There really isn't. There is no street name, there's a lot of Wilsons, you know, but what was here before? Who was here before? And that's what I'm saying, as, as, as a commissioner, on this commission, I, I would love for you to expand that study. I, I know that that's something that we would discuss as a commission, but I'm bringing it forward to you so that you don't lose that momentum, so that we can continue with this, this talk, this conversation and, and really consider how far behind we are as a city and what we need to do to catch up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lewis.
It is respectfully requested that the city and ARG evaluate additional tracts not identified within the reports and that additional community meetings are held prior to the approval of this motion. Further review of LA County maps identify the following information could merit further evaluation from ARG. It's understood that all areas will not merit historical district designation, but it would be helpful if we could all see this in a mathematical way, the same way the district showed contributors versus non-contributors. An example of this is an area south of Rosemont Park. Section 5.4 of the Phase One report identifies the area north of Las Tunas as the section most eligible for historic designation, yet many streets are excluded. This area is again referenced on 83 and 84 of the citywide context statement. That report showcases houses south of Hermosa. A public works tract map related to Rosemont tract identifies, indicates that the Rosemont Park tract was established in 1924. The tract map to the southern location revealed that the area south of Rosemont Park was older by two years and established by George H. Woodruff, a prominent businessperson and City of Whittier City Attorney. Rosemont Boulevard, which lies south of Hermosa Avenue and which the district was named after, was originally named Gonzalez Drive. At some point, the street name was changed to Rosemont. I urge the inclusion of the street's history as it was not indicated in the original report. Furthermore, due to the track's connection to Woodruff and early development, we can infer that it may be the foundation for the expansion of the current Rosemont Track area. Because of this, I request further inquiry into the area's history. And all areas had non-contributors, including Kendall and DeRoca, which were in historic areas. Those streets alone had over 51% on their streets. It would be interesting to have more context about Woodruff and why the name Gonzalez Drive was changed to Rosemont. Additionally, was the street's name changed from Gonzalez to Rosemont indicative of, indicative of the extension of Rosemont Park District to the south? Essentially, was that a de facto extension when they changed the name? Another interesting fact not mentioned in the historical context was that one of the actual historic designated areas had a connection to Ruth Patton, the mother of General George Patton. That name is significant to San Gabriel, yet it wasn't identified or connected to the district. You would think that somebody with that history to the US and to San Gabriel would be identified in the report, yet it wasn't. And it's not connected, it was connected to Church of Our Savior, but not to this actual district. You would think that's notable and something worthy of highlighting. Other areas such as north Rosemont Park consisting of streets such as Dobbin's, Milton's and Coolidge, west of San Marino, were identified as Dobbin's tract, implying a connection to the Dobbin's family, which has a strong association to local establishments such as Huntington Memorial Hospital, aviation history, real estate and the California Cycleway. Again, this appears to have a rich history connected to it that would warrant further information and consideration. Areas not identified into historical districts were identified as zones or planning districts. Throughout the different phases, the terms planning districts and zones appear inadequate after reviewing the rich history San Gabriel possesses related to tangva history and the historical context of areas such as La Colonia and the village played, and the village that the village played in society. It would be beneficial for more residents to give an op, to be given an opportunity to chime in on the project with more aggressive outreach, as many residents were unaware of this project. So it would be helpful and beneficial for everybody to thoroughly understand this. I know that there were things, meetings that occurred, public meetings such as this, I don't think is adequate, I think we should have had public forums for this. I know this has been going on, but many residents are still unaware. It would be beneficial for more residents to give opportunity to chime in on the project. So I'm urging you to vote against it till we get a little bit more further information. Again, most of the taxpayers that paid for this report, I think it was over $80,000 worth of funds, of city pay, city taxpayer money was used for this report, but the majority of the residents actually fall out of the districts identified. It's understood that not all people will support the designation of the historical district, but it's important that all taxpayers that paid for this, especially that since the majority fall outside of these districts, are given ample opportunity to respond and that they can see why their area or tract was not included. The street Padilla mentioned earlier also has a rich history, it looks like the property line when evaluated on the tract was associated with the Mission. That's another tract that still has a lot of integrity. Again, it's understood that there's a lot of places, like the term used, McMansions were identified, but that's consistent throughout all historical areas. So throwing out a whole tract because of some examples on corners, I don't necessarily think that's, that's correct and.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe you could wrap it up.
The community members, also the commissioners, the community members.
Okay.
But some, these do appear, appear arbitrary.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lewis. Do we have any more public comments?
No more public comments.
Oh, okay, great. I'm sorry, we do have one public comment. Cecilia, you need to submit your, well, well, we'll, we'll give you one, just come up and but make sure you submit it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll make it brief. I, I wasn't planning really on speaking, however, in June of 2024, I submitted a Mills Act application. I'm a newer owner in the Rosemont Park area, really excited to get started. There's been so much effort and work that's done, that's been done the past few years, I'm really grateful for all of that. But my application's been stalled since June of 2024 because we're waiting on approval of this, of these districts. So I, I'm hoping that, 10 months went by without a meeting or without what I saw, any forward progress, I'm sure there was work going on behind the scenes and I don't mean to undermine that, but I'm just kind of hoping that this might, may get approved so that I can get my Mills Act application underway. I really would like to participate more formally in the city's efforts to, you know, maintain the, the historical, to, let me think of the word I'm looking for, the, in the efforts to preserve what we have here, which I think a lot of people feel really strongly about, including myself. So, thank you.
And Adam will give you the form, just for formalities, Cecilia? Great. Okay, so before we begin with council deliberation, there were some comments that were made. I'm going to give Jennifer and, I'm sorry, Katie, Jennifer, Katie and Senya an opportunity to respond.
Thank you again, this is Katie Horak with Architectural Resources Group. Is this on? Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to respond and I want to thank you for your questions and also for the public questions that were asked. And I just, I'll just say that I can appreciate that these findings can seem arbitrary to some, because there are many, 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 many beautiful historic buildings in San Gabriel and some of them fall within historic districts and some of them just do not. So I just want to say that I can understand how that might seem somewhat arbitrary, but I do want to just reiterate that this process was over years of driving every single street, doing a lot of property-specific research, a lot of district-specific research, really analyzing the integrity, making sure that there were cohesive concentrations of, of buildings within the district boundaries and a lot of careful review from the HBCRC and city staff and the city's Historic Preservation Commission, I'm sorry, consultant. So these findings were well reviewed and vetted and we really appreciate the collaboration with the city's consultant throughout the process.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you so, so much. It's so wonderful to see the excitement for historic preservation, that's wonderful. Couple of things I will say, certainly no decision here was arbitrary, very well thought out, very well researched. We were very careful, the team was very careful and I was very careful in my review, I know the commission was as well, to question the findings every step of the way. I wish the dedicated community members here could have been with us every step of the way. I don't know why some of the noticing for a public hearing didn't land as it should and that would be something to think about for the future for sure, because we'd love the participation of folks throughout the process. If you saw the processes we saw at every step of the way and heard the presentations and were intimately involved, you would understand the decisions that were made. Puts us at a bit of a different disadvantage to, to take a look at one property in one historic district in one area of the, of the city, when the city is so large in this moment, you know, to, to really respond to the exact questions that are being asked. But we're happy to talk to any community member or any one of you that has a question about why things were, were decided the way they were. That being said, I did, I did see the comment from the, in support, but from the resident on Padilla, and I did take a look at the property, so in case she's listening. I do want to say that, that little residential area to the north of the Mission District, Planning District is, in and of itself, it's, it's intact, it has some great houses in there, that particular house is wonderful. It is two streets north of the current boundary that's being proposed for the Mission District, Planning District. So it's, this is where Katie was talking about, we have guidelines from the National Park Service about identifying these properties also, these boundaries. And to, to create a discontinuous district doesn't serve us well in the city, it would create a donut hole of non-contributors and contributors around it. So Padilla isn't a street that can be included in this district boundary the way it's currently drawn. Lastly, I would address one comment about the taxpayers paying for the survey and then not a lot of people are really, or properties are really in the district. I love this, I really love the, this historic preservation-centric way of thinking, because that's my world, but, but really the survey has been done for all of the residents and it's equally important to identify what's not significant or eligible for designation as it is to identify what is, because inevitably you'll have projects come before you that want to develop their properties in, in a different way. They may want to add on or, or, you know, expand their properties or change the roof or change the massing, and those things will be allowable for properties that are not eligible for designation. It's, it's equally important. So the, the survey that's been done, the projects that has been done is for the whole city, whether, whether the property's been identified, has historic and included in the district boundaries or individually significant or not. So happy to answer, any further questions?
Thank you. Senya, was there any further comments?
Oh, I would just echo, keeping the enthusiastic momentum going is wonderful. And to Lewis, the research that you've done is what we hope that people will bring to our commission. It's wonderful and, and that is the kind of work we want to do in partnership. That's what our commission is here to do. It's to, to work on behalf of residents and the city to make this city that we all love as beautiful and wonderful as we possibly can.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go back, do you want to begin or would you like your other? Okay. Any, anybody would like to say anything? Any, anybody would like to say anything? Councilmember Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the thanks to staff and the consulting company to provide this kind of survey for us, it's, it's a long time running. I would, I know that we established this, uh, survey, it's, uh, back to 2020, I got elected, and really, I appreciate, like, first of all, uh, after three years later, on the 20, uh, big, big, based on the, it's 2023, we have that phase one, right now, just two years later, and the, and the phase two. It's really appreciate our, include the historical commission to do the, this wonderful job, at least to give to us some step can moving forward to, to, to let the, like, at least we have to have something. But I, I also, it's a feel like why the Mission District's still not on the listing, right? So...
Why don't you ask the question?
Yeah.
Ask them. They can tell you why.
Yeah.
I know that. That's a sore spot for a lot of us.
Yeah, I know.
Who would like to answer that question for Councilmember Dean? Because I think that's a really important question.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know this is a question on the minds of many, and it was certainly a district that we originally had identified as a historic district, and it is the historic heart of San Gabriel. So again, I can appreciate, um, that it might seem confusing that it's not actually a historic district, but again, within the boundaries, the, um, patterns of development within that district are so disparate. There has been so much change over actually hundreds of years, which is unusual that I can say that in a place like California, but it, it is the case. Um, and there are a lot of parking lots, and a lot of the buildings within the district have been significantly altered. So it just didn't hold together. Once we started to do our contributor, non-contributor count, it really didn't meet that 51% threshold. We, we do think that it, um, really should be treated as a planning district or conservation overlay zone where there is the ability to, um, really enact some standards in that area to maintain the historic character that it has, to really celebrate the history of that place. Um, but as a historic district, it just wasn't, um, it wasn't meeting that threshold of 51%.
So actually, just right now, the this phase two, just focus on the, the, the historical, the district, right?
Correct.
So, so based on the, your criteria, it's at least the, uh, contribution, I think the condition is a 51%. But for my personal, I really want, wish the Mission District become the historical, you know, so that's...
But these are federal criteria.
Yeah.
We would love to do that. I mean, but we can't. I mean, if you're gonna call it historic, you have to meet the criteria.
Yeah, so, so, so that's, I, my question, I don't understand, so, uh, so it's, it's, I always see the, the, your answer and my, I, I understand it. So, uh, and the question is if, for example, for, for, right now, the Mission District or some, like, property owner, they maybe just, maybe not a district, just some single house or single property, they feel they are needed to become the historical? So we still can have a chance if, for example, if we moving forward to adopt, based on, based on the, our rest of council member, if, if adopted this, the phase two, doesn't meaning we stop it, right? We still can continue to do that, that, that's the...
Correct. And I can, I can start this and maybe pass it off, but correct. So this will adopt the findings of the survey as an inventory, but this, this is not formally designate any of those historic districts, that's a separate process. And I will say that the, um, the, the criteria that we use are the city of San Gabriel's criteria, and this 51% threshold is the city, is part of your ordinance that we find this, this threshold of 51%. Um, so it is absolutely, the city is prerogative, if you wanted to move forward with a historic district nomination, it could be studied in that way, the Mission District. That is, uh, within the purview of your commission and council. Maybe you could take over.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to answer that question, or just address this topic in general. We were all upset and disappointed about the Mission District. It was, um, something that we didn't see coming until quite the end, and the research and the field investigation bore out that we had just too many alterations, um, lock, last lock, uh, loss of integrity in that historic district, uh, lowering it to the planning district or conservation overlay zone. And so, um, what we say in the field is that a property has to be able to express its time and place. You have to be able to look at it and know that it was, um, historic, that it was built during this time, it reflects its significance, um, and that is because it has integrity. So when properties are altered, uh, to the extent where integrity is lost or sufficiently diminished, it just no longer is able to express that. And when the concentration of that is, is so much in one cohesive area that we're attempting to define as a district, um, then it simply can't rise to that level. And don't forget that when we do name things as historic districts, we're attaching responsibilities and requirements and also granting preservation incentives to those properties as well. So it's a careful decision, and you're asking the right questions. Uh, there's also beyond San Gabriel, there is sequoia and state law, and so by identifying something that's, that's eligible for designation and, uh, something that ultimately becomes designated, you know, uh, it will be subject to sequoia as well. So, uh, so that's a consideration to make. But I would say that, um, I'm, I'm grateful to hear your comments and your concern about planning districts because, uh, properties, uh, that are submitting a project to modify them, um, come to my desk all the time. As a city architectural historian, I'm often reviewing projects that are in these identified historic districts and planning districts. And the question is, um, do we encourage changes or discourage changes in order to increase historic character, in order to return, have a return to integrity? So these districts can express themselves, uh, express the time and place and their significance in San Gabriel. And so if we move forward today is, is not the move forward moment with, um, adopting design guidelines, but if you do choose to identify the planning districts as official conservation overlay zones and, and we adopt them as such, uh, then we can write design guidelines that help our residents know, uh, the type of modifications they can and cannot make in order to encourage a return to character and integrity, and hopefully regain that in those areas.
Another area is for the, uh, our village. So it's the same situation, right, for the Mission District? Okay.
Same situation.
Okay. So, uh, another question with Samantha, if, if, just direct talk, if we, we not adopted this, 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 uh, phase two, what's the next time, the next things you wanted to do?
Uh, what staff would ask as part of next steps would be to receive direction from council as to what else to analyze and review and potentially bring back through the Preservation Commission and then back to City Council.
Okay. So, but if we, if, if we still like, uh, continue to do the survey, continue to do the, like, uh, if can it do, bring back another survey to us, but maybe still not include it, some, like, people feel they are, it's a historical building? So what else should we do? We continue to do that? Or we just, just always continue to do the survey?
That...
No, no, is, is it still have the result? That's I wanted to know. So, okay, I just want to conclude my comments. I, for me, okay, I, I really think, wanna think about it, some property owner, they think about their historical, or some area to include, like, a Mission District or, or Village, but I, I, I wanna like, moving forward, so at least we can, I wanna make a motion, adopt it, this resolution that they, the, the, they suggested, and moving forward and give it to, then staff, they can continue to accept the, some, uh, the, the application moving forward, because our city, I feel that our city is really historical, see, I really like, we current have this kind of, the survey, the step-by-step. That's my comment. Thank you.
Can you hold off on your motion? Because we haven't heard from everyone.
I know, I know, you, you still can...
Or was this a hypothetical? I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Was that just hypothetical? You were...
Yeah.
Or are you making a motion? I'm, I didn't quite understand it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I make a motion, but you can still continue the, to deliberate.
Well, it doesn't work that way, but... You're either making the motion or not, because then we need a second. So I, do you want to just wait?
Okay, I wait, wait.
Okay, great. Okay, who, who would like to continue on?
I respect your mayor.
No, no, I, I just want to make sure we have a process here. Uh, who, who would like to?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Wu.
Oh, thank you. Well, well, this is a, it takes a little bit longer than I, uh, anticipated, but first of all, thank you so much, uh, especially Chair, uh, Chairperson, um, Senya. Well, this is wonderful that, uh, I am so lucky that I can be a part of this, uh, the great city. And also thank you, uh, Jennifer and Katie, and thank you Samantha. I think that all the great work that you have done, that will be making our city, um, history so shine, and, um, I, I truly look forward that, uh, all, I do, I do enjoy reading the report, especially the historic, uh, the history backgrounds. That is a lot of story that I truly adore. I mean, this is so great, but I do have a couple of questions for you. So regarding the, the historic context statements, so since the H, we call the HCS, identified properties constructed between 1775 to 1980s, so at what point in the future will properties built after 1980s begin to be considered for evaluation?
Thank you for your question. We use 1980 because it was roughly at the time of 45-year thresholds, and we're really looking at properties that are historical, potential historical resources and can be viewed within a historic lens and perspective. So the, um, State Office of Historic Preservation does recommend that cities update their surveys every five years.
Every five years.
We understand that, that, that very, very rarely happens in practice because surveys are obviously exhaustive and expensive processes, but I would say probably in the next 10 years you're going to want to look at properties up to 1990, which is hard to believe.
Yes. I totally agree. So for properties that build within the, this, the period of significance, so if homeowners have replaced features such as windows, doors, or roof, I understand that won't stop you from identifying that as a contributor. So, uh, what about for those people that already living in the designated district? And do they, uh, you know, need to follow the guidelines as a new, um, you know, the, like, a person that who would like to renovate, and then they got a lot of restrictions because they live in that, uh, district?
Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, yes, so if you were to adopt the survey, uh, findings tonight, uh, that would list all the properties, uh, on the inventory. That means they've been determined eligible by you, uh, by the survey, but by you. Um, and then they are subject under the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Ordinance to initial review. For properties listed in the inventory, that's an administrative process, so that's handled by staff. Um, and then if they were to move forward with being designated and become on the register, that's for designated properties, then there's a distinction between, uh, administrative and, um, initial review by commission. Uh, one of the great, um, the great hurdles we have in front of us, should you adopt the survey, is notification, uh, because the property owners need to be made aware of the status, the new status. We've been doing this piecemeal as projects come in, and, uh, we know where, you know, kind of where we're heading, and, um, and so we've talked to them about preliminary findings, but we don't know yet until we, uh, pass this point if, uh, if they will be on the inventory. Uh, so notification is really important, and that is to be determined, to be determined by the director. It's not prescribed yet, uh, but a, but a robust notification system so we make sure we meet, uh, we reach every resident would be very important.
I see. And also that, uh, every single paragraph that you mentioned, potential district must have at least 51% contributors to be eligible for local designation.
Mm-hmm.
So let's say if some of the, uh, the property owners, they say, you know what? I don't really want to answer it. Do we count those contributors that not willing to participate include in the quorum? We say the quorum, because they, they also have a, a vote, but they decide not to, to participate.
Yes, so there's two 51%, so it can get confusing. The first one is that we have to have 51% of the properties within the boundaries of an identified district to be contributors, for them to be eligible as a potential district. Then, once we get to the part where, uh, residents want to designate their district or, uh, uh, say a designation application is brought forward by the commission or by a city agency, then we have another, that other process I mentioned, that includes public outreach and workshops and public hearings, and, um, that is, process is usually started by, um, and according to the ordinance, by 51% of the properties in that, the property owners in that district signing a petition. So it's not necessarily a vote, it feels like a vote, uh, but it's usually initiated by a petition process in which 51%, which is essentially a vote, uh, of 51% of those folks. But, um, everybody, uh, in the district has a right to, to, um, have an opinion about that, to, you know, sign the petition or not sign the petition, to participate in the public workshops and find out more, uh, but that is what we need to move forward in order to designate, according to the ordinance.
Got it. So if, let's say tonight, the city council decided to adopt the resolution approving the CDY Historic Resource Survey Report Phase Two, so when and how would the city begins outreach to homeowners within the designated district to inform them of their, you know, their right to participate, to opt-in or opt-out, uh, by majority vote, or you call the, uh, petition?
Yes. Um, well, I, I'm probably speaking for Sam, she may want to chime in on this, but I assume as soon, as soon as possible, uh, we do have to define a program, define a process to do that first, um, but it's in our best interest as a city to do that with haste, uh, so you can make sure that property owners are informed. Um, and I don't think it, it requires, uh, direction from the City Council to initiate that because it's in our, our ordinance that once, um, uh, once the survey is adopted, um, then we will, we need to reach out, we need to develop the pro, the program to reach out for notification. Uh, I'm not sure about staffing levels and, uh, availability of time and resources in order to do that. I'm not sure if Sam would like to speak more to that.
So which would say that would be from city? It's not? Okay.
Uh, yes, the notification process would be very similar to a, a public hearing notification process where a notice is mailed to property owners. The only difference would be typically notification is provided by a project applicant or a property owner because of a specific project or an application that they filed. In this case, it would be initiated by city staff and mailing costs, and all of that would be the city's costs. Um, and then following that, if there is expressed interest, then the city would start coordinating these workshops and meetings with any interested property owners. Um, again, to Katie and Jennifer's comments, there would have to be that percentage of interest. Staff will continue to have these informative workshops so that owners can be informed of the context statements and the two phases, um, of the survey, but as to whether or not they eventually result in formal designation, if in any areas, um, have enough of those signatures to start that process, that's to be determined, but that would be the process.
I see. So once that, um, so, so what about the current guidelines or restriction regarding the renovation, remodeling, demolishing, uh, or sales of the home, if they will be identified as a contributor, uh, within the historic district? Does that, are we putting a flag on somewhere so people, when they sell the property, then they will, uh, the buyer will be notified that they're actually purchasing a property that will have more regulation, and maybe they cannot really freely to do whatever they like?
Uh, there's two levels of reviews, uh, currently for any, um, residential application that is in addition or remodel. Um, the planning division would take in a site plan review application, and at that stage, depending on the scope and the scale of the project, it may potentially get routed to the, um, city architect who is, uh, separate from Jennifer, who's the architectural historian. And if the city architect identifies, and, and that has been a part of the process where the city architect, um, is familiar with the context statement and also with the survey, if, uh, their office sees that it's a property that is, uh, either identified, uh, under phase one or currently under phase two, um, then that's when they would send the project over to Jennifer. So even outside of these, of the survey pro, project, um, Jennifer has been a part of reviewing each individual application, and if a property is identified to have some potential, then staff can also request that that property owner takes the review and analysis further and ask for an assessment of the property, bring in their own historians, so there are already several, uh, levels of review when it comes to a property that, um, may have some potential for designation. And it's been briefly mentioned how with some of these projects, they may also trigger, And it's been briefly mentioned how with some of these projects, they may also trigger CEQA requirements and reviews and potentially going to Design Review Commission or Preservation Commission. So again, even outside of the survey process, administratively, staff is already reviewing each individual property and application that comes through. To, more specifically to your question about properties that have been designated as landmarks or Mills Act, the city uses the Tracket Permitting System, which allows staff to add notations and to add flags to those properties. And that was actually one of the very first items that the commission had done, where they asked for a list of permits, construction permits, and to identify and flag the properties that have been designated. And so that's done already. So whenever an applicant does come in and they want to do re-roofing, that notation would automatically pop up at this point.
So which means that the non-contributor that actually enjoy a little bit more flexibility than other contributors that within the whole district, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all my question.
Great. Vice, or, okay, Vice Mayor Chan?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank Chairwoman Senya and Katie and Jennifer for all your hard work. I mean, I can tell this took a lot of hard work and it's very painstaking, very technical, and just, I'm appreciative, just as a resident of our city, that we have a commission and experts that do what you guys do. So, yeah, you've convinced me that you've done the work enough to be able to put this report together and move to the next phase. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Yes, let's continue. I mean, I'm so torn because I want more added to these districts and with a lot of information, you go down a rabbit hole. And then when you start looking into history, which I find history to be fascinating, you go down and you start discovering stuff. And we had one of the residents, Louis, I believe it's Louis, Louis here, and a lot of people, they, some people are messaging me like, this is historic and we believe it's historic, but not until we start going down that rabbit hole is when we start figuring out more stuff. And that's why it's so important to have the outreach, right? I mean, some people, most of the people are busy, I get it. But the fact that our Councilmember Ding brought up a good point, that we might have a pathway forward where we approve this so it could continue and not slow that down, but then open the door for more homework, more research, more outreach, which is, it's just great. I mean, I'm so passionate about history when I go out, and I've heard the council members here, and when we go out to events, how we, we're so proud of our history, we're a historic city of San Gabriel. And there's so much there. I mean, there's General Patton, and there's ties to General Patton, to San Gabriel, deep roots, statues and all that. And then even with Benito Benjamin Wilson, I believe there's ties to him too. I believe somewhere along grandparents or second grandparents or something along those lines maternal. And then you have like Pio Pico, that was actually the last governor of Alta California, that was actually born here at the Mission. There's so much deep history. So thank you so much for that work. I'm kind of motivated by what Councilmember Ding said, where we can continue this work and we can look at how to incorporate more and then not slow down the process, but continue with it and get more outreach so that we can look at more areas that we can bring in and not slow down the process. My question is to those residents, for those residents that have that historical house, that they believe are historical because it was built in the 1900s, early 1900s, would they, how would it work when it comes to Mills Acts? This is brand new to me, it started when I looked at the commission meeting, I got very excited and what you guys are doing, but I want to understand, like, when it regards to the Mills Act, how does that work if you're not in these districts? Are they affected or not? Is it more complicated? It looks, it sounds like it's more complicated.
Everything is more complicated than anything. No, it's a great question, thank you. Currently, our current San Gabriel Mills Act program requires a property to be designated first in order for it to be eligible for the Mills Act. So even by adopting the survey now, tonight, say, that will not make all of these properties eligible for the Mills Act, but it will put us to the next step, which would be to designate, whether this is an individual property, say, or a district. And it will help the property owners in those districts, they can help us by getting neighbors together and having these workshops. So we have to be designated. Now, some cities, very few cities do allow properties that are determined eligible through a formal process like this to be eligible for their Mills Act. But very few do because the Mills Act is a commitment and is a county and city partnership, you know, and a great incentive for historic preservation. So, but currently, our program, you must be designated to be eligible.
Thank you, thank you. I have so many, I mean, this is, I feel so bad because I'm here, I feel so bad because I'm here at the tail end of all this work. It's just incredible. It's the first time I hear about this and it's just, it's great. I mean, I've only lived in San Gabriel for about nine to 10 years, and you guys have been working, particularly Chair Senya has been, and her family has been working on this and for a long time, and thank you for all that work.
There's so much more work to be done. Don't worry, Councilmember. Not over.
So the last, the last question, just to wrap everything up, if, is, back to Councilmember Ding's question, if we say no to the general plan right now, I know the contract with Katie would basically, if we say yes, it went, that's it. She delivered everything that she said, all this hard work, she delivered, that's it, done. And then we got to figure out the rest, right? If we're going to get a contract to get this outreach going on or what have you. But if we say no, I mean, she's already basically delivered, my understanding is that she, if we even say no, she's already delivered on everything that she said and the contract that was supposed to be done. And her work, I mean, it costs money, right? So if we said no, how would that look like? Because we got to, my understanding is that we have to compensate her time. And I kind of want to weigh out how much it would cost, like a general ballpark of how much that will cost, because we already basically have some other data, and I guess it depends on how much, how deep we want to go into this. I don't know if any, if Mark, you can help me with that question?
I'd be happy to, Councilman Herrera Avila. And just for everybody else's benefit, he asked me a question this afternoon as he was getting educated on this, and basically asked about that with the contract, with what are the deliverables, what were promised to be part of that. And I need to modify something that I said to you earlier, which is the contract that's laid out, that gives each of the work products, and then all of the number of meetings that were going to be held with the community and commission, and then ultimately the council. And I think Katie displayed all that on the screen to show everybody. We as a staff actually laid that out in RFP, and that normally doesn't happen. Normally, we ask them to come up with their work program and submit a bid based on that. But I was reminded when I did the research that we kicked this off during our financial, the times where we were having financial difficulties. And so we wanted to try to find the most efficient and the least expensive way to get this done. So that's part of the reason why this has taken so long, is ARG was kind enough to split this over several fiscal years. I think we even put in our RFP what the max price could be because of what we could afford, and we traditionally don't do that. So they came in under what our max was. And our RFP laid out specifically how many meetings that would be for and what the deliverables would be. So yes, to your point, unless we found something that was severely lacking, or they didn't do a work product that was sufficient, they have delivered everything that they've been asked to do. Katie is phenomenal and would work with us on anything else that we wanted to do moving forward, but as you said, she's not in it for charity and we'd have to figure out what that, what that would look like going forward. Does, as you mentioned, we'd be doing future surveys from time to time to relook at homes and all of that stuff. If council wanted more information or more detail, we could work with that team and come back with what that price would be.
Thank you. And the last comment is that, I guess now is my comment time, okay? A lot of questions, a lot of questions. It's really important, I mean, I feel we can't get it right, right? You know, but the fact, the matter that we have the residents coming out and speaking about in favor, right, basically in favor, not opposing what we're doing and shutting it down, but it's saying, hey, I want to be included, I want to be included, talk to me, we have all this, we've done all this homework, please include us. The fact that we have that, I mean, is really heartwarming to me because we have a passion, we have a common passion for our city. And back to Councilmember Ding's idea of continuing and setting that motion forward, I see that there's a pathway there where we don't just halt on the operation and all the hard work that has been done, and then create opportunities for the residents to come in and then possibly with more information, change some things around or add stuff that we might have not known about. With that, I feel confident if we were to move with that suggested motion, I feel that we would, that I would feel comfortable with that. That's all I have to say. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you?
Oh, I'm just, I'm ready to make a motion if.
Well, I'd like to say something.
Sorry, my apologies. Madam Mayor, my apologies.
I've been very patient, well, I have. Okay, so I've been able to say a few things, but I wanted to make sure it's clear that this is a living document. It's not, we're not closing anything, except for the fact that they've already delivered. So what we want to do, and I believe, and again, I'm going to ask Senya, but it's always been the understanding that once we approve this survey, that we're going to continue on. It doesn't close. Can you confirm that, Senya? Because now I guess the consultants will be on the sidelines.
I think as Katie said, best practices is to update the survey, and that's part because history, the present keeps moving and we have more history to consider, so we want to be looking at buildings that were built after 1980. But in the enthusiasm and in the discussion, my commissioners and I have long hoped that we would have work to do that took us beyond the four quarterly meetings each year. We had talked, as we were looking at our ordinance, about trying to meet every other month, and if so much work was there that we were meeting monthly, it would be very exciting, it would be a wonderful place to be in if we had enough projects, enough community interest, enough workshops to do. So I certainly hope, and as I hope I conveyed, I really look at the context statement, the Phase One and Phase Two, as our toolkits. This is what's going to allow us to do a lot of the work that is needed in the city. And absolutely, I hope that these are documents that are consulted frequently. I would be so sad if they were shelved and waiting for another update to come around. We should be using these to tell our stories. So absolutely.
Thank you. And that was going to be one of my comments, that for the longest time, I've been asking that we move these meetings on a monthly basis, the Historical Commission. And so I am glad we actually have had this conversation because now my colleagues could also hopefully agree with me that there is value here and there's work that can continue to be done. And so we do need to just change our ordinance so we can have monthly meetings. I know that was tabled at some point, Mark, is that this year or soon or?
The next time we do a code update on that, we can absolutely include that. When we looked at the code, it allows us to hold those meetings more frequently, it allows the Community Development Director to call those meetings as frequently as needed.
So is it the Development Director or is it the Chairperson?
Well, in working in conjunction, the code actually says the Community Development Director has the ability to call more if the work is there, and I'm sure Samantha would call those meetings as frequently as need be. And then the next time we do a code update, I mean, we can do it specifically for this, but the next time we do a code update, we can just include that.
What's the date for that code update?
I'll have to work with Sharon to find out what our next code update would be.
Okay, because, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for the Chair and the Director to maybe just start calling the monthly meetings. I mean, there's enough enthusiasm here. There's no reason why we can't start it. We don't need to have, wait for this code. I know I've waited at least two years, if not more. And then I also wanted to emphasize that I know this group, our commissioners, as well as our consultants, they did everything they could to publicize, to outreach. There is never enough, you know, we do our best. You've seen it time after time after time. And so I know you did everything you could, can always do better. And so I would like to suggest for the commission in particular, that, you know, maybe start creating a criteria of some sort, when we do have, you know, districts, planning districts, because now, you know, this is historic, but these planning districts, I still say it's very, very important, and maybe having a process, you know, when we are looking at specific areas, you know, what does that look like? And I think you've kind of done this in other circumstances, or our department has, where you literally put pieces of paper on notifications at people's homes, although I noticed they also throw those away. But I think we've done everything, but, you know, social media, you know, we have CityBeat, we have Discover Us, San Gabriel, where you have a constant block there, feature that says, you know, if you're interested in historical preservation, if you're interested, I don't know, think of the language, but, you know, it has to be, there's no magic bullet, you have to repeat yourself over and over again. And I know that because I prime myself in my newsletter and the times I hear, well, you never told me, and it's like, it's right there, I can tell you the date and the section.
Yep.
Yep, it's there. So maybe, you know, between the monthly meetings, you know, commission thinking about better ways of doing outreach, again, I know it's never going to be perfect, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands, you know, we're not closing anything tonight, but the work has been done. But the commission, that love for history and preservation, I mean, that's going to continue on. So those community members who, you know, might be a little miffed because theirs was included, there's still opportunities to include them. But we are bounded by this criteria, whether we like it or not, you know, to designate something historic, we cannot be arbitrary. We have to go look at the federal rules, make sure they're eligible, and that work's been done already. So it's not that we've, you know, kind of haphazardly came with this survey. So for that reason, I am also going to approve it and I'm going to try to move it forward. So I met your Vice Mayor and Councilmember, one of you would like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion too.
Okay, great.
Wait, so, is it the motion that Councilmember Ding put forward?
To approve.
To approve it and?
The staff recommendation that the city council adopt Resolution Number 25-35, approving the CDY Historic Resources Survey Report Phase Two. Is that the motion you wanted?
But if Vice Mayor want to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify that for Councilman Herrera Avila, that this motion and the language as is, implies that we are going to include Councilman Ding's concept of continuing to move on.
So we will be exploring to look, we will be moving on and continuing?
So, no, we're approving, I see where his confusion.
Right.
We're approving the citywide Historic Resource Survey Report. That's the motion.
But it means that we're going to.
But that still means that we're moving forward.
We're moving forward, doesn't mean we're stopping.
Yeah.
But we're moving forward with what's presented, but Councilmember Ding added another caveat, and I want to make sure.
Okay, I like the Senya say, keep going, updating, we're not closing it, right? Just moving forward for this Phase Two and keep updating, yeah.
So I think, I think the confusion is, your motion should be, look at the recommendation, I guess. You're approving the Historical Resource Survey with the understanding that we're moving forward.
Yes.
As the Chairperson has said.
Yes.
Does that clarify?
I want to define what moving forward, because when Councilmember Ding mentioned moving forward, he, my understanding was that, that he meant that we will continue with another survey, he mentioned more data, and that means another contract, a potential exploring another contract.
Well, but we would have to wait for the commission to meet and evaluate, and, you know, what would that look like? But tonight, what's on the table is this survey. We got to approve the survey first before the commission can move forward.
Yeah, then we have the commission to have, give it to us to future update the recommendation, right? I don't think, like, I just want to clear, even for the future survey, probably we still not finish it. You had to do that 100%, right? You always have something missing, but at least we do something.
Right.
To moving forward so we can continue it, right? Otherwise. to moving forward, so we can continue it, right? Otherwise, maybe hundred years, you don't, you don't, you, you don't finish.
Okay, so, so is that clear? So who's, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, and we had a second. Okay.
And I just want to, just one last thing, just want to make sure that this is going to continue, like, because there were some passionate people that, well.
Well, I mean, you have your chairperson, we have a Commission, and they, they want to move forward. They've been wanting to move forward for a long time.
Right.
So.
So please move forward with this, and there's a lot of information, and please connect with our resident here. And there's more people, I know not that many people showed up for this, but there's more people that we could connect with. And please, if you're comfortable, Louis, connect with Senya and connect.
He has already, but anyway.
Actually.
They can continue on.
I just want to say, that this Historical Commission, that's why you need the update. Otherwise, they don't need it, right?
Okay, so we have a.
If we needed the Commission, that's meaning we want to continue to do this.
Yeah, having his, not every city has a Historical Preservation Commission, so we're very fortunate. And to have this caliber of individuals serving on a volunteer basis, we are very, very fortunate. So, okay, so now we have a first and a second. Let's.
Uh, Councilmember Ding, second? Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. Next item.
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry. Uh, we're going to do a health break?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna request one, too.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's say ten minutes. So we'll be back here at nine fifty. Nine fifty-five, thank you. Okay, we're resuming the meeting at nine fifty-seven. Next item, please.
Ordinance Number 721, Amending the San Gabriel Municipal Code Relating to the Transient Occupancy Tax Introduction. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight's staff is introducing Ordinance 721, which makes administrative update to the San Gabriel Municipal Code to reflect the city's current transient occupancy tax rate, or TOT rate. As a background, in March of 2013, San Gabriel voters approved a ballot measure to increase the TOT rate from 10% to 12%. The City Council subsequently adopted a resolution certifying the results of that election. Since then, hotels in San Gabriel have been collecting and remitting TOT at the rate of 12%. However, the municipal code itself was never updated to reflect the increased rate. Ordinance 721, presented tonight, corrects, corrects that discrepancy. It does not create a new tax, nor does it raise the rate beyond what voters already approved. It simply ensures that the code is consistent with the rate that has been in effect since 2013. There is no fiscal impact. And the recommendation at this time is that the City Council will introduce Ordinance Number 721 by title only, waive the first reading, and schedule the ordinance for a second reading and adoption at the next regular council meeting. That concludes my presentation.
Great, nice and short. Any council members have factual questions to staff to clarify the report? I see none. City Clerk, do we have public comment?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, it's now time for council discussion, or a, a motion I would entertain.
I would, if there's no discussion, I will move to approve.
May I have a second? You can if you want. I'll second.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Okay, next item, please.
Approval to enter into a multi-year contract with Peregrine, a sole-source data migration system, and award a contract to Sun Ridge RIMS Incorporated in response to RFP Number 25-07, Resolution Number 25-34. Police Chief Elizalde will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask, but do you want to make this a consent?
Let me ask our, our city attorney.
Just, just kidding. Just kidding. I'll do a Reader's Digest version for you. Thank you for having us tonight, Mayor, and members of the City Council. We're here tonight to present the CAD RMS proposal for your consideration and ask for your approval. Presenting with me tonight is John Born, Chief Technology Officer with Sun Ridge Systems Incorporated, and Jordan Karazak, Major Accounts Representative with Peregrine. Computer Aided Dispatch and Record Management Systems, CAD and RMS, are two critical technology components that emergency service agencies rely on daily. CAD RMS systems are the operating systems for which data is inputted, stored, managed, and retrieved. The CAD systems are used to manage and coordinate emergency responses, allow dispatchers to quickly gather, log, assess information from 911 and non-emergency callers, assign units to calls based on proximity and availability, monitor real-time locations of units in the field, log all details of an incident, and allow information to be coordinated and shared between other emergency service agencies. A records management system, RMS, are used for collecting, storing, and managing operational and administrative records. RMSs are used by officers to document their reports, arrests, investigations, traffic stops, and all other self-initiated activity. RMSs are used for logging all evidence while maintaining evidence control, storing detailed information about individuals, property, vehicles, locations that are involved in incidents. Agencies rely on record management systems, data to generate statistical reports, identify crime and traffic trends, and support resource allocation and strategic planning. Record management systems help ensure documentation is complete and meets legal, both federal and state guidelines, as well as departmental standards, including audits and public records request. Our current CAD system, the San Gabriel Police Department entered into a multi-year contract with Central Square Technologies in 2001 to provide CAD and RMS services, which are set to expire on June 30th of 2026. The current system is unable to adequately support the department's needs. Its configurations are lacking on multiple levels, causing staff to manually verify data before it is reported to state and federal stakeholders. Additionally, the system is unable to produce real-time data and trend reports, which hinders the determination of staffing and resource allocation. Staff have experienced regular delays in communicating with Central Square Technologies throughout the contract period, and at one point involving the city attorney to foster those communications to meet our needs. The Central Square, the total cost for the Central Square contract was $458,519.30. The final annual payment was processed in July of this year in the amount of $84,649.72. Where we want to go, on May 29th of this year, the San Gabriel Police Department issued a RFP, RFP Number 2507, for a computer-aided dispatch and records management system with related modules. In response to the RFP, Sun Ridge Systems Incorporated and Central Square submitted proposals. Central Square's proposal was incomplete and did not meet the RFP criteria, thus eliminating them from further consideration. Sun Ridge Systems Incorporated is a software provider specialized in CAD, RMS, jail management, and related systems. This is their core business. Sun Ridge Systems Incorporated offers an integrated software suite called RIMS. RIMS features an extensive, features exclusive and extensive capabilities, provides ready-to-use software, has an outstanding reputation among public safety agencies, and delivers a cost-effective solution. More than 200 public safety agencies are currently using RIMS. And in nineteen, I'm sorry, correction, in 2025, the Monterey Park Police Department selected RIMS as its CAD RMS vendor. And in 2024, the Claremont Police Department also selected RIMS as their CAD RMS vendor. Staff has been in contract with RIMS prior to the RFP being issued, and met with their sales and implement- sales and implementation team to ascertain if RIMS would benefit the San Gabriel Police Department's current and future needs. San Gabriel also met with Monterey Park to discuss their assessment of RIMS as well as sharing information with Claremont PD and their experience with Sun Ridge RIMS. Both spoke highly of the company. After reviewing Sun Ridge Systems' submitted proposal, staff is confident that Sun Ridge Systems Incorporated, RIMS, will meet the department's current and future CAD and RMS needs, providing a higher level of service than the existing vendor. The proposal for your consideration tonight is allowing the city to enter into a five-year software and equipment lease purchase agreement with Sun Ridge, correction, Sun Ridge Systems Incorporated, CAD RMS systems. The total cost financed at an interest rate of five percent is five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, with annual payments of a hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and forty-two. At the conclusion of the five-year term, the city will own the software licenses and will continue to pay an annual support fee, which is subject to an annual increase between two percent and six percent. Additionally, there will be a one-time cost of seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars that will be added to the first year for an import-linked software for RIMS to our crossroads software, which is all of our traffic collision data and reporting. This includes installation and annual support. The annual support begins at forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars with the maximum two percent increase per year for the first five years. After the five years, annual increases will range between two and six percent. The first payment due at the time of agreement execution will total one hundred, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which includes the first lease payment and the initial annual support. To put these numbers into context for you, and what this technology and platforms should be doing for us, is that here we are, five years into a contract with a technology and platform that normally and typically for most agencies lasts a minimum of at least fifteen years to twenty years. Monterey Park's, with their taking on RIMS as their new CAD RMS system, did so after eighteen years with their prior CAD RMS system. For the numbers aspect in comparison, Monterey Park's bill for this project was one point six million dollars. Alhambra PD uses another software, and they originally paid one point two million dollars for this new software, and they did so after seventeen years of a prior CAD RMS system. South Pasadena paid five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, and Montebello paid one point six, seven million dollars for this type of technology. Montclair was at seven hundred and five thousand dollars and switched over after twenty-seven years. So again, I am very mindful of the cost to the city and to our organization, but this is technology that is needed. My staff, at all levels, is on the daily doing work in a deficiency or with a deficiency. There's problems with the system as far as it stalling out, it timing out, it not being able to produce timely data. For example, I had my lead dispatcher, who is still here, Alfred, run a report for me on basic statistics and calls for service over the last year and a half. It took Alfred around an hour and a half to two hours to produce that data. I asked my record supervisor, Judy Liu, to produce equivalent data as to what her department was doing. It took her over a day to put all that information together. Where we're running into issues with our current CAD RMS system is, again, the information that it is producing, we're finding that it is not accurate, and so staff has to manually go back and make sure all of that information is accounted for. This is critical, especially when we're dealing with audits by the Department of Justice, the FBI, and local entities that require our data and that it's mandated to share. With that, I'd like to bring on John from RIMS. He's going to speak to the technology, about what RIMS has to offer, and then followed by John Jordan with Peregrine as to what that platform can do on top of a new CAD RMS system.
Chief, thank you. Mayor, Council, thank you for, good evening. So my name's John Born. I'm the Chief Technology Officer with Sun Ridge Systems. So talk about a little bit of our company and then our product of what we offer. Kind of our vision started back in nineteen eighty-two, about the time that the PCs came out, and that's about the time that the idea of RIMS came out to say, can we build a CAD RMS system on a PC itself? And for those of us that were back in those days, you know, most of this was back on mainframes and so on. So that was the idea back in eighty-two. The site was first installed at Rockland PD in nineteen eighty-five. They're still a customer today, forty years later. So they're considered our flagship agency there. But they've grown with us. That agency was seventy-five hundred population back in nineteen eighty-five. They're now seventy-five thousand population. So they were a very growing city, and we grew with them, and that means our product grew with them over those years. A little bit about Sun Ridge Systems, we are a privately-held company. We're not for sale. We're a California corporation as well. And, you know, we, a lot of the employees that we have today came from government background. I came from a government background because I used to work at City of Rockland. But we have dispatchers, previous law, police officers that work for the company today, so they have a lot of input about what the product does. As far as our market and where we're at, a majority of that here is in California. We have over two hundred and thirty-three different types of public safety agencies, and that runs from, like you, a city police department, to sheriff's departments, to state agencies, like State of California, California Lottery, to a lot of colleges, universities, CSUs, UCs, so a lot of different types of agencies use our software. And because we're so Californian-centric, that there's things like the, every year, California comes out with new offense codes, new statute codes. We may, and we manage that, we disseminate that information to our agencies so that they don't have to re-enter all those new offense codes. So for example, this year, there was six hundred and twenty-eight different changes that came down from DOJ, and we put that out to our agencies so that their folks, their records people, don't have to make all those changes in the system. And we do that with all of our two hundred-plus agencies. So there's a lot of value that comes into being Californian-centric, that, you know, we're really purview to those changes in the laws that happen and make sure that all those agencies are then, you know, using that, those new laws for that. And then also working with local county data, like here in Los Angeles County, we work, we do querying against LA County records information as well as state, federal information for that. And we're not only in California, we're in other states, as you can see, so we go as far back as Georgia on that. We also are in other specialty markets. Gallo Winery uses our software, Morongo Casino out to the east from here, Spirit Aero Systems are supplier of parts to Boeing. And then you probably see right in the middle of there, Burning Man Project. We actually have staff out there that are just leaving today because Burning Man Project, Burning Man is getting ready to go. But you know, there, they-
I plead the fifth.
That city has nothing, there is nothing there, and they bring in a complete city of sixty to eighty thousand people into that city. And so the county that is in there is actually a RIMS customer, and we work with, also with Bureau of Land Management, that actually helps out in managing and enforcing everything out there at Burning Man. So a lot of different things that we do besides, you know, the typical sheriffs and police departments. Products that we offer at RIMS, as the chief mentioned, is that it is our flagship product, that is CAD RMS. That's the core of what we do, and that is calling nine-on-one to write in a police report, and all the products in between that, and that's those other eighteen different types of products, from mobile computers and mapping and things like that. And then we integrate with different types of products, like nine-on-one, state interfaces, and so on for that. One of the key benefits of what you're also buying is a product called, it's called Citizen RIMS. This actually is a portal for your citizens, so they can actually look on your website and show up-to-date crime activity in their neighborhood. And so based on during implementation of what is shared from your agency, things like being able to see pin mapping of crime data, or stop data statistics, or crime data trends, that that is going to now be public information that you're going to be able to share, and that has no impact on them because, from the staff point of view, all this data gets uploaded and managed automatically by our software. So there's no impact on the staff to be able to have a public portal for that. And then finally, that the citizens themselves can actually sign up for alerts. So that's a big piece of what Citizen RIMS does. Obviously, service, we're going to be doing native conversion for the agency so that the active police reports that they're currently working right now on cases, that they're going to be able to do that in our software after they go live with us. We've done this conversion with thirty-three competitive products, so one of them being the one that the city, the PD actually uses today. And then we do our own in-house training with former police officers, former dispatchers, who are actually going to be in there training your officers on the software. And then obviously, project management can go live for that. And the product, and the reason that our reputation is so well, is because of our support. The products, any product that you buy is no good if it's not supported. And so that's where our reputation really comes into play, is that we fix the problems that agencies bring forward. We're there twenty-four-seven for emergencies, we're there for a typical eight to five for any other kinds of questions. So we're supporting our product moving forward, including having our annual users conference, where the PDs, like your agency, would have a voice in what the next product's going to look like. What does the PD here need to see in the product? What could it be done better? And so when we look at the total types of enhancements that are done to our product, about eighty percent of that is driven by the agencies. They have a wish process, they can submit their wishes, and then those agencies vote on it, and then that becomes, like, those are the priority items that we use to build new enhancements into the products. So that's how the product's been staying fresh and new and moving forward and keeping up with trends with the technology on that. And of course, the chief went through the cost, but basically it's broken down into kind of three separate sections, and that is, the cost is based on population. That means a small agency can still use our software affordably as well as a large agency. And so it's based on population tier. We're a site license, meaning that if, as your city grows and you add more officers, add more users, we're not going to come back and charge you more for that. And then finally, the support is covering that twenty-four-seven emergency, version upgrades, version updates throughout the year, and just normal routine support. So that's the solution, that's my spiel on that. So thank you. Chief?
Thank you, John. I'd like to bring up Jordan from Peregrine.
Vice Mayor, do you want to wait till after this presentation, or do you want to-
Either way.
Is it quick?
Yes.
Okay, he would like to ask you.
Just wanted to ask a question regarding your product. And so I understand what your product would do in the context of our police station, or, you know, PD and the requirements and the needs, but what does your product do for, like, Morongo? How is that a similar thing, or what it does for other businesses?
Right, yeah, so you're referring back to this-
Or Burning Man.
Right.
What is the, I guess-
Well, and you speak to, like, let's say, Gallo and Morongo, for example. So they all have their own security department.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, Morongo has their tribal police, and so to protect the tribal land that they're on, they have the same issue as any other law enforcement agency.
Oh, okay.
They're tracking for records. Same thing with even Gallo Winery, where it's access to the winery that they're trying, you know, they manage multiple winery land, and so they're trying to manage the security access to that.
So it's still security-based?
Yes, absolutely.
Or it is the concept of security or law enforcement, or police, or-
Correct.
Like, security enforcement?
Right.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Great. Okay, and next speaker? Oh, I'm, thank you.
Hi, Mayor, Council, thanks for having me tonight. So I'm with Peregrine Technologies. My name is Jordan Krassik. I'm a major account executive here, based locally in LA, in West LA. So from a high level, Peregrine is a data integration and analytics platform. So in addition to the CAD RMS system that the agency is looking to bring on with RIMS, which is also a fantastic CAD RMS, there are a lot of other individual pieces of technology that San Gabriel Police Department also has, which causes a lot of friction for officers all across the departments, who need to log into all of these various different individual systems to pull information for their various tasks, whether that's producing reports, whether that's trying to advance investigations, et cetera. So what Peregrine does is, we can integrate a number of different disparate individual systems that the agency has all into one single place, and then provide a lot of other capabilities on top of the data. In addition, this might be shocking, but law enforcement data also happens to be very messy. Things are misspelled all over the place. Imagine trying to spell Hyundai, you know, fifteen different ways. So it causes a lot of time, you know, it's very time-consuming and friction for officers to get clean data out of those systems, especially produce reporting for you all and from demands from the community. So once we integrate all the data, we do a lot of data cleaning and data modeling. We're going to be assisting RIMS on the migration from all of the data from the old system into the new system, and then provide a one-stop shop for everyone in the department to essentially have a Google search bar across all of their data, and then also automate a lot of the advanced reporting capabilities. A little bit about us, so we were actually also started up in Northern California, up in the Bay Area. We've since grown pretty rapidly. We've got over two hundred and fifty customers across the United States. Here in LA County, we work with a lot of neighboring agencies, including LAPD, Glendale, Burbank, Arcadia, the ones that you see on the screen. One of the other big benefits of the Peregrine software is that we also allow agencies to search and share data with each other. So you all moving to RIMS, Alhambra's on a different system called Spillman, Glendale's on a different system, those systems don't talk to one another. So if someone is committing crime in San Gabriel and then flees the city to another neighboring city, and they want to ask Alhambra to run out information for them, someone has to pick up the phone and call that person to get any access to that data. But with Peregrine, we're creating a data-sharing network amongst the agencies so that it's much easier for them to actually communicate with each other. And Peregrine is an enterprise license, so everyone in the agency is going to get access to it. It's not a seat-based license, as everyone's going to have different needs of the data from the executive leadership perspective, investigations, crime analysis, patrol, et cetera. And ultimately, what does that mean for, you know, the community? By having better data, you guys are going to have increased efficiencies across every role and department, in addition to bringing on a much more advanced CAD RMS system like RIMS. We're going to be able to improve the crime stats and the mapping, which also helps with resource allocation, so they know where to put their resources, which will in turn improve response times, right, and engagement with the community, and also improving officer safety. So I tried to keep that short. I know it's late here. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, you want to wrap it up?
Sure. Thank you. I got the hint.
Okay.
So again, I just want to reiterate that I am mindful of this cost to the city and the overall budget. And just so it's clear, we're not looking at operating two CAD and RMS systems simultaneously. I'm entering into this process now because the conversion can take up to several months. So our projected go-live date is July one of two thousand twenty-six, the following the ending of our Central Square contract. So it's not like we're going to be having two CAD RMS systems. If it is possible to fully convert to the new system, RIMS, along with Peregrine, then we can talk about going live even sooner. But to RIMS and their reputation in this field, they have not missed a go-live date in, never. So again, that's why we started conversations with them before the RFP even went out. They came out, they looked at our system, saw our needs, and so again, being that they put in their proposal, we were very happy that they were, and we feel that they- put in their proposal, we were very happy that they were, and we feel that they will meet our needs. Again, this is a lot of money for technology, but when it's done right, we shouldn't have to revisit this type of technology for at least the next 15 to possibly 20 years. And again, to John and his comments during his presentation, they have not lost a customer yet. And everything that I hear about Peregrin from all the other chiefs are telling me, as soon as you get it, it is a game changer for how your organization's going to work with Alhambra having it, Monterey Park looking into bringing on the platform in the coming years. And again, the big thing for investigations and police officers and detectives as a whole in fighting crime is that we're going to be able to share data across the board, and so we're not going to have those delays that you typically see with just different versions of CAD RMS systems. For the recommendations, before you, we're asking that, that you allow the city manager to execute a five-year professional service agreement with Sun Ridge Systems Incorporated, also known as RIMS. Authorize the city manager to execute a three-year professional service agreement with Peregrin. Authorize the city's IT department to purchase the required servers in the amount not to exceed $45,000, and to adopt Resolution 2534 to appropriate the necessary funds for the completion of the project. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member have factual questions to, for staff? Okay, Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know there's two options, right, on the floor. One is buy it at large, buy it the five-year, I mean, I'm sorry, let me start back. One option is purchasing the product and not having to do the payments. And the other option is to lease it, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. We have two options. And then, I know you mentioned it, or somebody did, I read it here. After the five years, if we do decide to lease it, I see that it's, that the percentage that we're going to pay on top is going to vary from 2% to 6%. So I just kind of want to ask, what is that variable that's going to determine if it's 2% or 6%?
I would have to refer.
After the five years?
I would have to refer to John, but I think it would be based on the market and, and what the market for CAD RMS systems are charging at that particular time. So they do allow, and, and speaking with them, that's why we're representing, it could be anywhere from the 2% to 6%. But I would ask John if you would have more solid information, but it's just a variable for the future, just like any technology with, with prices rising, with whatever technology you're thinking about today or buying today, it may not be the same dollar amount in five or six years. So that's where that variable is built in.
And to that, I mean, that's why in the first five-year contract and the lease payment is that there's that 2% locked in, right?
Right.
But, but typically, you're looking at CPI, you're looking at?
Right, so there's an index.
Yeah, there's an index kind of thing to that, and, and so it just, it kind of depends on what the economy's going to look like in five years.
Right.
So that's, that's why there's a range in there.
Okay. And the next one is more, my last one is just more of a, and I think, well, I'm just going to ask questions, I'm not going to make a comment. AI, how is it incorporated? Is it incorporated, or are you guys looking at incorporating AI to the software, or does that apply?
So the Peregrin platform can use AI in a number of different ways in the product to increase efficiencies for various officers and automating, you know, very manual tasks that they often have to do.
Good. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? I see then. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, so now, now we can deliberate. Can you, Adam, move to the slide where there's the recommendation so we're all kind of clear what's up there? Thank you. Okay, who would like to begin, or who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
The staff recommendation?
Yes.
You don't have to read it. Okay, I'll second. Let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, next item. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll make this very brief, but just a reminder that it's going to, it's projected to be very hot for the rest of this week, starting on Thursday, and cooling hopefully on Sunday. We'll be putting out social media information in the next day, and we're going to have our cooling center open at the Community Recreation Center on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, in addition to the LA County Library, which is generally an open cooling center from 10:00 to 7:00. So please, have your loved ones, anybody you know that doesn't have a cool place to go, utilize either the County Library or our community center.
I might show up.
Please do.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. Council comments and conference slash meeting reports. I'm going to start because several of my colleagues, I had attended the ceremony on August 2nd, so I just think it's important to kind of put their comments in perspective and context. So I will begin. First of all, I wanted to make the announcement that effective June 30, 2025, La Casa de San Gabriel Community Center closed its doors permanently. Since 1946, La Casa has been a cornerstone, cornerstone of the community, operating on land owned by the Presbyterian Church. On August 2nd, at a special ceremony, the Lazarga family, whose grandparents founded La Casa nearly 80 years ago, joined in celebrating a historic milestone as the land, formerly known as La Casa, was returned to the San Gabriel Tonga Tribe. As La Casa's Board President, I extend my deepest gratitude for everyone who has given us decades of support in advancing our mission to provide educational and social services to the community. While it is with a heavy heart that we say goodbye to La Casa, we warmly welcome the Gaberlino Tonga Tribal Council and remain committed to ensuring a smooth and respectful transition. Now, at the August 2 ceremony that was held at the formerly known as La Casa property, I was honored as mayor to join and speak at the historic gathering celebrating the return of the land to the Gaberlino Tonga community. The former La Casa de San Gabriel is now the Gaberlino Tonga Tribal Center at Cebangna, following the Presbyterian of San Gabriel's groundbreaking act of returning the land to the San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians at no cost. It was gifted to them. This is first-of-its-kind transfer in California, marks a powerful step towards healing, education, culture, and connection. I am proud to support this milestone and look forward to continued collaboration that fosters education, cultural exchange, and mutual understanding for generations to come. Now I'll pass it to the Vice Mayor to make his comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was lovely. We're just sad to see it go, but it's also nice that you will return the land to the tribe, and that's very nice. Real quick, I had a few events that I attended since the last meeting. On July 16, I attended a business networking event at Luna's, our Mexican restaurant right next door to City Hall here. On July 23, I attended a Pasadena Chamber of Commerce networking event at Brookside. On July 29, I attended a block party on the 500 block of North Dorca. On August 5, I attended the San Gabriel National Night Out. It was a great event, and it was very well attended by many of our residents. So thank you all for coming out. On August 11, I attended my monthly Chinese-American Citizens Alliance dinner meeting, and that's all I have. So, Madam Mayor, I yield.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to make this brief, won't repeat some of the other stuff that you guys all, we all attended. Thank you. On July 21 to 24, I was in Atlanta, Georgia, attending the National Association of Latino-Elected and Appointed Officials, also known as NALEO, the 49th Annual Conference, where we joined many leaders from across the nation to discuss policies, representation, leadership opportunities for diverse communities. I also got accepted to the Well Untapped Program Fellowship, which teaches elected officials about water and the needs to, to preserve water and just water education across the board in California. So on July 18 to the 20th, I was in Richmond, California, participating in this program as a kickstarter, and I was learning and visiting actual sites, which I found very, very informative. It's different to be onsite than just to read it on a paper. Also, on August 8 to the 9th, I was in San Diego, California, with the same program, continuing this fellowship session, and this time touring, one of the highlights was touring the Tijuana River. We were right by the border, learning about water and how it affects communities. And there, there's going to be a couple more. It's a six-month program with a few trips to visit sites, various sites. Also attended a block party with Captain Wayne Chan, just really, really proud of our community coming together and the police and our chiefs of police and police department and fire department coming together for something like this meaningful event. I want to encourage for that to continue for anybody that wants to have a block, block Also attended on August 4, the Edison Facility, the actual emergency operating center, the EOC, and received a briefing and a tour of this facility where they showed me firsthand how they respond to emergencies, like the Eaton Fire in particular, which I thought that was pretty cool to learn firsthand and see how that works. Also, attended on August 7, the Los Angeles Digital Government Conference. Learned a lot about AI. If you want to look into that, anybody wants to look into what that's about, I'll just, I'm going to continue. Also, attended a meeting with a subcommittee with the Vice Mayor and staff about dumplings and beer. On August 11, we discussed and reviewed feedback to develop this program from information that, that you had actually presented to us and tasked us to, to look at. So we did look into that. And then one last item here. Today, I just got back, I was in Oxnard from August 17 to 19, and I attended the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, where I participated in the various conversations revolving around risk management training and strengthening leadership and how to work with city council, staff, and the city manager, which I thought that was very, very informative. It was the newly-elected official academy. I think a lot of us have already attended, right? And the last thing I have here, very last, I'll have a bit of a request, and I want to see if I can garner a little bit of support. Before the pandemic and before I was a council member, San Gabriel had a youth and government program that gave the students a voice for civic life. I know my colleagues value empowering the youth, as you guys have expressed this, and you have had this program in the past. I'd like to see if we can explore bringing it back, a youth and government 2.0 program. I'm ready to help if I could on structuring and improving it from the last time, and so that we can give our youth an even stronger opportunity to lead. So my ask would be, if I can get support from some of my colleagues so that we can direct staff to start working on bringing this program back.
Well, I'm, Mark, you know, both of us were, were here, and I actually had one of my daughters participate in the program. It wasn't us who terminated the program, it was the school district, because there is a lot that takes place. They have to take the kids out of the classroom, they have to find substitute teachers, and they're the ones who said, we just don't have the capacity to have a program like that. Mark, I don't know if you've, because I've asked the same question, and I think the last time you, you met with the superintendent, I'm not sure if that conversation has continued on, but that was from the Gaberlino High School. Can you add a little bit more?
I would echo everything that you've said, Mayor, but if council would like us to look into that again, I know it's a program that our city clerk has been fond of in the past and, and really enjoys that program. So if, if at least three of you think it's a good idea, we would look at at least having those conversations and bringing information back to council.
Okay, I mean, I don't mind having the conversations, but just with the understanding that?
Yeah.
It was something that we did not terminate, but?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm in. I need one more.
Me too.
Okay, great, that's all.
Thank you.
You're important, too, but.
Yeah, yeah, Madam.
I'm sorry. I'm assuming you're okay with this. But, but I would actually maybe take it even as, yeah, no, we don't have to vote this direction, but if, if, well, I don't know if it's appropriate, but if that high school cannot, you know, can we look at maybe San Gabriel High School? Because it's close, closer, it's easier, because you also have transportation issues. How do you get the kids here? You have to have chaperones, but if it's walking distance, it might be easier.
For them, matter, even Delmar.
Well, Delmar would be, yeah, Delmar would be wonderful.
More specialty.
Oh, I know, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we're not on the agenda, but, but maybe just extending that, if that's okay with Councilmember Wu and Councilmember Ding, extending it not just to Gaberlino, but Delmar and San Gabriel High School.
Sure, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. So actually, on the, after the last meeting, okay, too many, okay.
Yeah, it's green now. Oh, it's still not working.
Test, test, oh, there you go.
Hello, hello, okay. July 18, so our Hope Line Club have the kind, the member, whole organization have kind of donation, it's for our senior meal, but also we deliver our coffee and the tea to our priest department, fire department, and, and, and City Hall, too. So just want to thank the city, like, staff to help our city safety, okay? That's San Gabriel Hope Line Club. And on the 23rd, I joined the CJPI, the board meeting, and elect the new board, the president and executive, the board member, okay? But I applied, but I failed. But I just want to serve, it's fine. July 30, we, Hope Line Club also joined the Pavo, they have a backpack giveaway at our Padiro, okay, just like provided this backpack for, for the student back to the school. And, oh, yeah, like, July 17, 24, and 31, it's every Thursday night, we have the council, I have a chance to attend it, and with our rest of, some council member, okay? And then, like, I have a chance on the August 2nd, like, Mayor already mentioned, it's a La Casa land return, it's a really great event, it's a give it to us, talking about the history, too, so, okay? And August 5, it's really like Sue also coming to the, our National Night Out to, and the chief, the police department did a good job for the, every year, so I really enjoy, and I saw a lot of community that member coming out, too. enjoy, and I saw a lot of community that member coming out too. And, okay, another things, it's August 12, and I have a chance to join the SGB club with the council member Wu, who it's for the 2028 AHA committee regarding the Olympic Games, so how SGB, the neighborhood city, how they can involve this wonderful event, like transportation, lodge, like hotel, or even like some local cultural event, how like invite people from all over the world, right? Okay, so it's a really good starter. Actually, this is the first meeting, okay, so hope, I wish, hope our San Gabriel, City of San Gabriel is a part of that too. And then, today, I have a chance to visit the, ASN, our trash company, they have the new facility in the city of Urbandale. It's very close to us, and based on today's, the tool, I know that's the largest, most technology-advantaged facility in the nation, okay? So I'm glad we have this kind, the ASN company do this kind of service. Well, one thing I want to just update and mention, our city still not comply some state, the regulation, SB 13883, because we don't have the brew barrier. But based on current, the ASN is automatically provide a service, so you, resident, you don't need to separate, but they separated for us. Actually, the Urbandale facility, it's especially, it's for the brew barrier, the separation. It's a really amazing, the machine to automatically serve, but I think that's one I want the city manager, also I propose, so how can we let, actually, ASN company want to do that too, it's, it's follow the state compliance. So our, also, it's like if we, the city manager, we can discuss for the, for this service, they can provide the brew barrier, otherwise we got trouble too, from my understanding, okay? The detail, so maybe staff can, can do like some more research, okay? All right, because this is important, so that's why I mentioned. So I hope got your rest of council members to support it, to discuss that, and let our residents have the more choice, okay? All right, thank you. That's my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Wherever Councilmember Ding went, most of the places I went there too. I'm not going to repeat anything, you know, whatever my colleagues has already mentioned. But today I attended the Legislative Speaker Series with Congressman Joe Cisneros, that hosted by San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership and Citrus Valley Associated Waters. Well, Congressman Cisneros shared his perspective on advocating veterans and also businesses in our region, but I also personally invited him to our Dumpling and Beer Fest on October 3rd. To my surprise, then I met many colleagues and elected official there, and most of them already aware of this great event. I believe that we can look forward to seeing even more colleagues from neighboring cities and communities join us. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Yeah, dumplings and beer goes far. So tonight's a special evening. We want to do a tribute to Bentley, K9 Bentley, who has passed away, and the adjournment will be done in his memory, and I'm going to pass this to the city manager so he can read the tribute that was written by his handler, Sergeant Paul Puente.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As she said, Paul Puente would love to be here tonight to deliver this, but he's out of town. I'll just read it as he wrote it. Bentley was a Belgian Malinois born in Slovakia on August 2, 2016. He was selected to be a police service dog at only 11 months old by adler-horsed canine in Harupa Valley. Sergeant Puente was paired with Bentley and attended Basic Handler School in August of 2017. Bentley was the youngest dog to ever go through school as a certified apprehension dog at the time. He was also the first canine in the San Gabriel Police Department's history. Sergeant Puente, who back then was Officer Puente, and Bentley set the bar high as the first canine team by assisting members of patrol and other agencies with locating dangerous suspects. Bentley also contributed to seizing numerous illegal narcotics off the streets. Bentley was known for his fun-loving and goofy personality, but he also took his job seriously and was courageous and proud. After nearly eight years together, Officer Puente was promoted to the rank of sergeant in December of 2024, and subsequently retired Bentley. Shortly into his retirement, Bentley was sadly diagnosed with prostate cancer. After his courageous battle, Bentley succumbed to his illness the day after his ninth birthday. Saddened by the loss of his best friend, Sergeant Puente promised to keep Bentley's legacy alive within the police organization, as well as with everyone who knew him. Bentley had a big part in building public trust amongst the community and the department. He and his handler were present at numerous city events. They also performed countless demonstrations for local schools in San Gabriel. Though Bentley is gone, he will never be forgotten. He will forever be remembered as a San Gabriel first police service dog who made everyone safer in his presence. Thank you, Bentley.
Rest in peace, sweet Bentley. The meeting is adjourned, it is 10:51. Thank you.